I'm going to call the order of the Hancock County Commissioners Meeting for September 4th, 2024.
I'm going to move that Dr. agenda is presented.
Motion. All us in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Do we have any public comment? Any other comment and approval of the minutes?
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the August 20th Commissioner's Special Meeting is presented.
So the motion, all us in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Michael, you need a minute?
No.
All right, UT.
Good morning Commissioners.
Do you have anything to add to your report?
Not really to my report, but there's an issue with my reappointment on September 9th, and they need somebody to introduce me. I think Mike has that information for the Commissioners.
We're going to deal with that under Commissioners or?
Whatever you want to do it now.
Is it in the Commissioners?
It's not, I mean, not specifically, so it would be like under my items.
Yeah.
Well, let's just say it's too big, the whole village all.
Yeah, let's.
Do it now?
Yeah.
I guess there's two issues there. The first one is, they don't want members on Zoom or on.
I'm, I'm going to be in Madison, Wisconsin then on September 9th.
Oh, no, they were talking about previous meetings though, that they'd like to have the members present instead of Zoom, is that, is that something new or?
Yes.
Is that a problem for you in the future?
I talked to Stacy Myers, the Director of the LUPC yesterday, and I told her if they, they could either reschedule me for later on sometime in October or find somebody else, I didn't care which way that went.
I was talking about future meetings if you were appointed though, about attending the Zoom.
Oh, it's not an issue with the LUPC, it's an issue with the Senate, the Appointed Committee.
And so they, when they want the Commissioner to be there, where is it in Augusta?
In Augusta, yeah.
Yeah, you just, basically you introduce as if you were testifying.
Yeah, introduce Miller as your nominee and the reasons why.
Yeah.
And then they continue on the process, so I think what I attached and sent, I didn't kind of, on the last page has a breakdown of kind of what their procedure for that whole appointment is, but apparently they do not view it kindly as you can't apparently take the time to show up in person to actually be there to introduce and all that, so it kind of apparently is looked at poorly by the committee, but if you can't even do that, then why should we consider your?
This is something new, it's political. The first year I was appointed, I went there in person, the second year. Yeah, I think I went there the second year. Last year, they did two appointments, one was done via Zoom and one was done in person, but it was, there was a political issue with the Picket Mountain mine, and they denied both applicants first time around and got themselves into a mess, so now they're trying to.
Redeem themselves?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. You know, there's, there's some members that want to see the LUPC completely change and I think it's, I think it's important that one of us goes. You know, that, that's made clear, I don't, is there one of us that can go or?
Unless he's Chair or a few.
It's on a Monday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, next Monday.
Miller won't be there.
Coming up quick.
Yeah, Miller won't be there.
Nope. What time, what time of day is it scheduled?
Nine o'clock.
I mean, I can look and see if I can change my schedule or something.
If you, I could, I, it's going to be a little hard for me to go, I actually pull it off. But I think it would make a lot more sense with Chair. No, I think, I think it would be one of us needs to go.
I'll check. So let me. Do we have everything we need, Miller, for our presentation?
He sent me his resume and stuff, he submitted, so I'll have to probably draft something for him and send it over to you.
And, and you know, the big thing is you've got to be under three minutes, so you've got to be.
I've served, I've served on this committee for eight years and four months, this is a reappointment, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it will be at all, but I think somebody needs to show up, otherwise they jump through the hoops.
Yeah. I'll look at my schedule and see.
Yeah, if not, you somehow will let me build.
I can't, yeah, this is my. Okay, on the report, we, we all know that.
Yeah.
On the report, Miller, in your report, you said that broadband is ongoing?
Yes.
I think this morning we're going to probably officially close down that broadband. You should note that.
Yep.
All right, okay, so I'm going to move to accept the filing, UT monthly report is presented.
Given motion, all us in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so. Our letter from John.
Well, my feeling is that I think that though his comments need to be incorporated into that, into that agreement. Michael, do you have anything to add to that or?
I mean, I think he made it kind of clear that the agreement as it right now is more the overall association, it shouldn't really specifically fire or anything, so. And then if we were going to, I mean, we talked about this before anyway, if we were going to give in equipment or anything like that, you could do that anyway, make sure you have the indemnification.
Yeah.
Turn it over as is, where it is, all that kind of.
So, so my feeling is that before we can take any action, though, his comments need to be incorporated into that agreement.
Yeah, I don't, I think he's just, I think he's being much too picky. I think just like we as a board have broad discretion on the services we want provided in UT, the Association has broad discretion as to what services they want us to provide on Eagle Island. And if all we're doing is providing funds to assist the Association in their fire service, then why, why is he making such a big deal on it? I think the fact that it doesn't specifically say in their corporations' documents that they have the responsibility for fire protection, I think that's a, that's a, it's a reasonable assumption that they're going to provide that if they can and so. But, I mean, all, you're right, when it comes time to start building our equipment, somebody's got to be, and we're going to retain ownership of that equipment. I think maybe that's a case where we want to be careful about, you know, indemnification, but if we're going to simply provide funds for equipment and get that to them for what they use, you know, once that ownership, once they take ownership of that, we have no liability or obligation to that, so. I, I, I feel bad for Eagle Island, they're trying to do the right thing and, and, and I see we go here, John Hay was throwing another block in the road for, for getting that done, and it's, I don't, Miller, what do you think?
I think the liability for the county would come is if we were providing them with equipment and something happened, and then they could sue us because the equipment was faulty, or the equipment was inadequate or something. But if we're just providing them with money and they're taking the money to buy their own equipment, that's up to them and it's completely their responsibility and liability, and the county would be exempt from any liability.
And you're not opposed to providing them funding for their fire service, correct, Miller?
Right.
And neither am I, I think that's the purpose, I mean, that's really our goal, is to assist them with financial aid to get this fire service done. And Miller, I, I agree 100% with Miller that if all we're doing is providing them funds, whatever they do with that, you know, long as it's fire service related, that's their business and we have no liability.
I look at it the same as we contract with volunteer fire departments to provide fire service for the, some of the unorganized territories. We don't tell them how they're going to spend that money. Same situation with Eagle Island.
Well, I'm reading really the portion that I think applies here, says, once a corporation has been established, right now the paperwork is just pending in Augusta, okay? So once it's been established, then UT may provide funding for the purpose of fire protection. Should be made clear and in writing that the funding is restricted to that purpose, these are county funds. And we should ensure that they.
No, nobody's opposed to that provision.
That, that's, okay, and then the organization will be on, be its own legal entity and responsible for its own conduct, it should have its own insurance.
Great, stop right there.
That's what I think applies.
Yep, and that's, make that, make that perfectly clear. They can draft the document that they'll sign saying that we'll provide, provide the funds, it will disprove this exclusively and.
That's, that's, that's what I think needs to be incorporated.
All right. Incorporate it into the, what he's stating or a future agreement, just, just so I'm clear.
Well, since we're giving him the equipment, I think that once we give them the equipment somewhere, we need something that says something to that effect. As far as maintaining the Association, I'm not sure we have any stake other than give them the equipment.
We're not giving them equipment.
We're giving, excuse me, we're giving them money to buy equipment, so. All right, so I think A, it needs, just like that portion says, it needs to be in good standing with the paperwork, not pending, but it's the entity form. Because we need, if we're going to provide them funds, we need to provide some entity the funds.
So this provision wouldn't be in the Corporation?
No.
I lost my. No, it would be in any, any document that we provide when we provide funds, correct?
Yes.
If the only question would be, I mean, normally like with other nonprofits, it's not like we have an agreement with that either, as long as they're certified nonprofit, then you just jack, if, if you decide to fund them, so I mean, I'm not sure unless we do actually provide them equipment, you need to do an agreement or anything else beyond that really.
No, we just need to be specific, if these funds, just like this document says.
I mean, we've been paid all this money, John Hay will write up this letter, and he's recommending that this, we assure ourselves it's going to be used properly.
Yeah.
We can do that with a sideline.
I mean, how, however you want to do it, but you're starting to set a precedent that now when you give to other nonprofits to have multi functions or purposes, that you're going to have to start saying, send a letter with that too that says that also is our understanding this will go towards X or this will go towards Y, this will go towards Z.
Well.
So, it's kind of from a broad perspective. We don't do that with other agencies.
I think this is a unique situation, this is not an agency that's providing services, Eagle Island has never provided fire protection. This is new to them, they're asking us to get involved, and I think this is, this is unique enough for us to make a unique situation apply, and that would be to. Miller, simply mention that in the letter of donation?
Yeah, the way I see it, they came to us and said, we, we're asking you for money to do this, and we're saying, we agree with that premise, and we're giving you the money, we're giving this entity the money to, to, to buy this fire equipment, and that, you know, you should have your own insurance and, you know, what that first two sentences of that last paragraph say. You want to read it?
No, no, I mean, I, I know what you're saying, I just, it seems like you're setting up a dual system here. So you're creating an issue for something, if you're going to donate to an organized nonprofit association, you donate to them. You know, and, and whatever goes with it is part of their charge, so their charge, whatever their purpose is, is their purpose. And all I'm saying is, if you start doing it with this, you're kind of leading yourself down a slippery slope of having to start dictating where money goes rather than, to give to them.
And I don't, I don't agree with that, Joe, I think this is unique enough that when we send them a check, we go, send them a sideline. That sideline sort of saying, we're providing you funding for your fire service, and we want to be sure that this money is used exclusively for fire service and not for other business.
So, how is that, how is that enforceable? I'm not sure it is.
It's not. And so what, so what, at least they're on notice.
So the question again gets back to how liable would the argument be if the money goes towards that, how liable would the county be for the result of giving a donation? Especially if you put in a letter, well, we're giving you this so you can go buy equipment, well, if they go, if they didn't get the money from the county, were they able to buy the equipment? So on and so forth, so I, I'm not trying to carry dairies, I'm just saying, you, you open yourselves up, the more specific you get with that, the more potentially you open yourself up, because you're saying you're giving it to them for an intended purpose that arguably somebody else will look at and say, again, it's not even in there articles of incorporation that they're going to be providing fire service. Now, it does make reference to a committee, but it doesn't say what that committee wants to do. I mean, I'm not, you decide what you want to do, I'm just throwing these points out to you.
We give, check the home call form. And we don't tell them what we want them to do, and, oh, shame on them, somebody takes it, goes to Florida, to Bahamas or something for vacation, you know what I mean? There's no difference, the fact that we didn't tell them it was for home business, whether we tell them or not. We're just saying that in here, in compliance with John Hay's recommendation, they put on notice that this money is for fire service only.
First part I don't disagree with, because that's what I'm saying, if, if you're just going to give them money, then just give them money and then they just.
I want, I want, I want to tell them what they want to notice, whether it's possible or not, that the money that we're providing is for fire service.
I think it is enforceable to the extent that they also asked us to pay for their trash removal. We contract with the town of Deer Isle to accept their solid waste.
In those cases though, you have a contract, and, and you don't.
We have the contract with the town of Deer Isle to accept Eagle Island's solid waste. If we got Eagle Island to use this money for fire equipment and they use it to buy snacks and cheese and crackers, next year when it comes time to renew the solid waste contract, we may look at that very seriously.
I think with the, you're saying the motion could be that we're, do we have a number that we're looking at, Miller? Pardon?
I thought I did it one time, but I don't have it.
Are we prepared today to make the motion to provide X amount of dollars to them for fire service?
We did that.
We did what?
What are you, I believe you said you were going to undertake the effort, assuming they met. But that's, these two, they're technically not in association yet, correct, so.
Yeah, that's why I'm not ready to donate.
Okay, so we're not ready.
I don't think we're ready, because.
Okay, but when and if they become an association, then bring it back to us that we're prepared to make the contribution for their fire service?
As they request.
All right. Next order of business is our liquor license permit.
Is there a difference here from to his license?
I mean, it's basically the same idea, it's the same, I believe, the same portion of statutes and all that, it's just in this case, it's an off premise kind of catering basically, where they bring the alcohol and all that portion of it.
Obviously, your license with the state distillery.
Yes, we are, we are a distillery, so we have a full land license.
Did we get that, we didn't get that certificate or anything to that documents, did we?
No, I can probably find it on my phone.
If it was necessary, we'll take you when you were the guest that you.
And then there was, there was something, there was a question about a public hearing, but the statute says that there may be, may, so.
So that's just, that, that's the way I read it, so rather than trying to schedule all that, I'm turning it back over to you, and if you decide, obviously that would.
I think the public hearing is at the discretion of the Commissioners.
What do you say, Miller?
I think the public hearing is at the discretion of the Commissioners.
Yeah, I think that's a little much just from one time.
There's a little word "may".
One time of this.
Yeah, yes, so I'm, I'm going to move to approve the application for catering permits, but licensee Jesse Luke Phoebe is presented.
Second motion, all us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're all sent in.
Um, I just need the page signed up on.
Okay, uh, I guess. You all put that in motion. All three?
Um, I think.
I guess, please no.
Yeah, but I approve again.
They are from the Newport area. It's a beautiful area though.
Miller, excuse me, it's still on the agenda today, but I'd like to have discussion in the near future about the possibility of paving our portion of the Matt's Ridge Road. Up there the other day, it's in real good shape now that you've done the work this summer, and.
Yeah, this would be the ideal time to do it, the, the road's in excellent shape right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, so maybe you'll get some measurements, and even though some fair is to check with some of your, see if you can get a some bids from your local contractors and bring that back to us.
Okay.
Gentlemen, you okay with that?
Well, one, what, you feel that that makes a lot of sense, it's been washing out enough, and that would solve the problem, or?
If, I think if we was going to pave it, we would have to pave the road probably and either rip out all of the ditches or pave the ditches, so the ditches don't undermine the paved road.
Whatever it takes, but I think, and that could be, TIF money could be used for that, correct, Miller?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Gentlemen, we okay with that, Ted Miller do that? Yep, do what, get, get bid for whatever you think is necessary to preserve that, okay, Miller?
Are you thinking of doing it this fall? I'm not sure we can get it done this fall.
I don't know, I know it's late in the season, I don't know what's going on, but I'm just thinking that sometime before that road erodes again, maybe we could.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
I'll check with the contractors and see what's. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, on to the airport.
Good morning.
What do you have to add to your monthly report?
Uh, nothing.
I'm going to move to accept the file, monthly report is presented.
Second motion. All us in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, modern aviation, I did talk to Tony, they got a date on the tanks, I believe it was late October, early November for a bill date, so they're moving forward, he was going to try to get some contractors out here to start the, start the groundwork, that was, that's the last update I got from them, along with what you got in your packet. So no action really required for that.
All right, how about our licensing, landing fees?
Okay, so doing some research, and even dating back to when I was in a previous life, you know, people would ask about landing fees here, and we would say no. Tony took over, he, he brought it up last year, I started working on it. I didn't have a real good avenue for collecting it, one that I liked anyway. Uh, so I kind of just set it aside, I did all the legwork, set it aside. And I reached out a couple of places and found this, this outfit called Vector, Vector Plane Services or something to that effect. So I'm, I'm kind of looking at this in a twofold, I'd, I'd like to have an approval to do the landing, to implement the landing fees, and then come back to you at a, at a later meeting, probably the next meeting with an agreement, possibly with Vector or another party, third party to collect the fees. I'm guessing, Paul, did you do any research on the fees?
I, I did not, other than looking at what you did.
Yeah, so you know, I, I, I think I did a pretty exhaustive search for, for the immediate area, and, you know, the, the, the fee that I came up with was actually, the, the fee was the same as Auburn-Louisville, and kind of the, the system I pulled out of Roanoke County, so I kind of made a hybrid system program to get, to get it going, so, you know.
There wasn't a creation there, was there, a creation?
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I, and I did some quick numbers this morning, you know, a 6,000 pound airplane, we're talking $19.50 for a landing fee. You know, conversely, 100,000 pound airplane is, you know, is $325, so it's, you know, it, it's not an absorbent an amount of money per landing, but, you know, the research that this Vector people put into it, I mean, they pulled our fee, what we would have done in 2023 was about $168,000 worth of revenue.
Commercial airlines too?
So, so the airlines is different, we already have a fee structure set up with the airline, so the airline wouldn't be part of this. The other thing that's not part of it is airplanes below 6,000 pounds privately owned for their own use. So we, we purposely looked at light airplanes and not placing a fee on those, because we don't want to deter that kind of operation.
So, my question, and it sounds like base aircraft are exempt from that.
Correct, correct, based aircraft would be exempt. Uh, light airplane below 6,000 pounds are exempt unless they're a charter operator.
Okay, yeah, so if you had, let's say, you know, an operator that's at the airport starts wanting to give instruction on a light twin, this.
There, there was, there's a provision in there that flight instruction would also be exempt.
Okay, missed that.
And, and most light twins would be low, be below 6,000 pounds anyway.
Close to it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and then I was kind of curious about how, and, and this agreement talks about what they use, but other, I mean, it sounds like they're using ABSB and that kind of. other, I mean, it sounds like they're using ADS-B and that kind of, kind of landing.
They are, um, so, you know, my original intent when I started looking at this was use modern aviation as, as the collector and go with our, our twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent split. Um, but I have to, I have to be quite honest, I was a little reluctant to do that where modern aviation hasn't lived up to the last, um, lease agreement yet completely. So uh, I didn't wanna, it would require us to, another lease agreement with them, and I didn't wanna put, you know, another one on top of one that hasn't been um, has basically hasn't been done yet, completed.
Well, and you outlined, you know, that you had come back and, and, you know, probably had a few, you know, at least this plane pass law, and there might be others. Uh, they could just be one of those that we consider. Uh, you know, but, because you're not asking for action on this one yet, right?
No, correct. I'm only asking for action on implementing a fee the first of January.
Yeah.
And then, then the next one, it'll, it'll, later meeting will be how we're gonna, uh, implement it. Um, I have to be honest, the plane pass seems to be, um, a really good agreement. Um, they, uh, you know, I've talked to both sides of it, you know, Main Coastal Flight gets bills from Plane Pass when they, um, go to other airports in the TBM. And then I talked to Province Town, and they, they use it for collecting their fees. So, you know, I've talked to both sides and it seems like it's a very easy uh, transition for, for both, and, you know.
How much is vector charge?
Uh, they're gonna be twenty-one percent rather than the twenty-five percent.
Well, that's twenty-one percent off the one sixty-eight projection?
Uh, no, it was actually, that's, that was our take, our take home was one sixty-eight. So that was after they took their twenty-one percent.
And now I, I, this seemed a lot easier than, even if this seemed less work, uh, and accounted for.
Agreed, agreed. You know, it seems like it's, it's.
And even the water.
Yeah, exactly. You know, it, it's, you know, they take care of all the billing, they take care of all the collections, they send us a report and a check, basically is how I. Um, and they'll, they'll put up, they'll put up signage in the FBO, they will, um, contact the third parties like AOPA, um, Air Nav, um, uh, ForeFlight, all of those to update them with, there will be a fee installed, implemented in, in the cost of those fees. So again, you know, talking, talking with Province Town, they was really happy.
Okay, so approve the Hancock County Airport Aircraft Landing Fee Program as presented and authorized chair to sign. As presented, that's.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I was looking for.
Yeah, that, that means January one.
Yep.
Second motion. Any other questions? Others in favor?
Aye.
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 And, and just a comment, I did reach out to the advisory committee. I did hear back from four of the members. There was really no, no concern with them either. So, so my last one is Chuck was here and goes, oh, look at that, all your computer is really gonna die next year. Um, and he said, maybe you should get, ask for some ARBA funds to replace them.
It sounds like a lot, any?
A little bit dramatic, but yeah. Five plus or more than they can't be upgraded from Windows ten to Windows eleven. That expires next year, so they have to upgrade again.
Was there an estimate or?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that.
It was.
Yes. So I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of five computers and one DVD drive totaling six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents we paid for our funds.
Second motion. Others in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, wait, we have the emergency mention. Your fourth.
Sound like there's anything to add? I'm gonna move to accept and file EMA. My favorite report is presented.
Second motion. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, jail dishwasher.
We had a, um, service that come, presented us with, presented us with a, have fixed. We went through that process, they came back with it. All right, so I know that wasn't the issue, need a new booster. Uh, we've been hand washing for a week and a half, so I made the decision to order that, get it overnight to get it in, so this is, um, the expense is thirty-six, seventy-seven, thirty-five, but they have tax, and then I had to work with them to get the tax, but I just had to build it, so I didn't have time to call them. So I'm just looking authorization. Um, can do it on the budget, either by twenty-four, forty-six, six oh two, or we can make a hundred, pick up her.
So I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of a new hot water heater booster for the dishwasher at the jail for not to exceed price of five thousand dollars to be paid for using ARBA funds.
Second motion.
And that five thousand dollars is because we didn't have.
Right. That was against the, what they was here, yeah. So I know it's gonna be in the thirty-six seventy-sevens. We're around thirty-six, thirty-five hundred, we're all same time.
Should I lower that to four thousand?
Four thousand. Second motion for four thousand.
Is that all right with jail administrator?
Yes, one hundred percent.
So it's not to exceed four thousand?
All right, others in favor?
Aye.
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 Second one, we are starting to take better waters again, and through the process, worked with them like this month, we're gonna bill you ninety-seven hundred dollars for July, I think for August. And we need to be up to date on our prison elimination act. We've already, our credited, but we just have to have an audit. And the price of that is four thousand dollars to be done in October.
And, and that was in that contract at four thousand?
Yeah, it was twenty-two hundred for probably, I think it was, and they up to eighteen hundred dollars, so.
Yeah.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna move to approve the Prison Ri- Elimination Act Audit Contract as presented, authorized chair to sign.
Second motion.
Let me pay that of what we have with E twenty-four, forty zero zero one.
Let's be used.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah.
So is my motion all right? Monica?
Yes.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then we have a, uh.
Time machine to corrections officer.
Move to approve the hire of Anthony Serian, is that right?
Zareen.
Zareen Avelda as an on-call as the corrections officer, favorite nine A, November, September seventh, twenty twenty-four is requested.
Second motion. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is he?
He's on this.
He's the son of, or a deputy, deputy, he's lead.
Okay. And a request for military leave?
Yes, we have individuals gonna be going from September twenty-third through December twelfth. Um, for mandatory training for military occupational specialty in the United States Marine Corps Reserve.
We have to do that.
That's what, for the list of time?
Because, because of the, yeah, because of the timing and the, and the policy based on the request portion. It said it has to be approved by the measures.
At the moment, time is usually going on.
Well, I mean, if it was beyond a couple of weeks anyway, then, yeah, that threshold would kick in. So, yeah, the policy basically says measures shall.
Okay, I'm, uh, move, move to approve as military leave for, uh, Hassan Fletcher begin September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four is requested.
Second motion. Others in favor?
That's all I do.
That's how much you've left, Paul?
All right.
All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, okay, first off, I believe we have a discussion about cruisers, just a follow-up on our discussions earlier in the year. I'm trying to plan ahead for utilizing ARBA funds, uh, to purchase cruisers for twenty twenty-five. Uh, as we discussed, budgeting, uh, some money for twenty twenty-five to then be utilized in the following years. Um, early in the year, obviously, we just had a lengthy discussion regarding cruisers, so I won't recap on all that, but just looking ahead, I submitted essentially what would be our plan for the next twelve to fifteen months as far as purchasing or recycling out cruisers. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have regarding. And the second part to that would just be the follow-up is if we can agree on a, uh, number to solicit, uh, bids as we had done so previously in three different banners, so that you guys can ultimately decide however you would want to award those bids. What we would be looking at for over the next twelve, fifteen months is replacing five cruisers. We would, uh, be looking at in exchange, we would also be looking at selling, uh, five cruisers as well. I would anticipate listing those for sale sometime around summer, fall of twenty-five, um, in the interest of utilizing ARBA funds, but also keeping cruisers and maintaining them, uh, to higher mileage. Uh, we look at purchasing them, obviously, uh, at, you know, nearing the end of the year as we discussed, but not necessarily implementing them to the front line until those cruisers on the front line reach that higher mileage in order to extend the longevity of, of the cruisers that we would be purchasing. And also, uh, they can basically taking that, once we take cruisers off the front line, that they would have higher mileage to utilize as spares, so. Uh, so that is what we'd be looking at, kind of our plan moving ahead for sustainment purposes.
So I see the motion that selected.
Yeah, so the one, uh, we did all, we did already, um, you guys had approved for two cruisers. So one of those that is going to be replacing is unit ninety-four. Uh, I would recommend selling that in twenty twenty-four with the other five, uh, in twenty twenty-five. The one thing that I would, uh, bring to your attention again, that we did discuss in the spring, was that these cruisers that we would be replacing, we would be paying to outfit them. The reasoning being is because some of the cruisers that we'd be getting rid of are older explorers, uh, so that the equipment that was used to outfit those cruisers won't transfer older than newer ones. Uh, so my thoughts on, or the intentions would be is after this round of cruisers, uh, we would hopefully be able to recycle some equipment moving forward uh, to help mitigate those, those costs. So we would be looking at, uh, the vehicles that we would be moving, uh, to spares. The first one, or the first, uh, action that we would be doing is selling unit ninety-four. Uh, it does have some, um, maintenance that would be required if we were to keep it, but it also is getting replaced, so it doesn't have been holding off because it doesn't make sense to sink additional money in that if it is something that we would be, um, recycling per se. Next, uh, I'd be looking to solicit cruiser bids in September. I would also be asking that those bids have a deadline to be opened or awarded in October or November. Um, and for the bids to, um, request twenty-four, twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five thousand. Um, honestly, my, my personal opinion is probably twenty-four is a little bit better. Uh, the reasoning being is you could probably, probably get a little bit better replaced on the twenty-fours. Um, and in addition to that, uh, in talking with at least one of the dealerships, they said that that is much more attainable for them to get right now than it would be twenty-fives. Um, from that point, anywhere from December to March, we would take possession of those cruisers. Again, it's still to be outfitted. There is a a little bit of a timeline on that. We are still waiting to receive the, the cruisers that we did previously, uh, purchase for. So I would anticipate a similar timeline, uh, somewhere between December and March, we'd actually take possession of those vehicles. And then we'd implement those over the next, uh, four to six months. Again, uh, as the existing cruisers have higher mileage, uh, we would recycle them out and transition them to spares.
So like, I think I understand your strategy, that you're saying in terms of like, you'll get the new units, but we're not necessarily gonna implement all the new units to the front line.
Immediately, immediately. And the reason for that is in order to mitigate costs and purchase them under ARBA funds, but then also to maintain and get a little bit more longevity out of our existing cruisers before we actually implement these. Uh, you know, in that, uh, respect, I would look at implementing one, uh, sometime around, uh, I look at implementing two approximately around, uh, December to March, whenever we do take possession of those. I would look at implementing the third around March, the fourth around June, the fifth around June or July. Um, again, to extend the life of our existing vehicles and, um, that was kind of a point that you've been made previously, so trying to really get a little bit more longevity out of.
So like your, uh, that's a number two twenty-one, but you're like, right now it's sixty-three thousand, or something, it's gonna be, obviously, when you're gonna try to keep on the front line until summer or fall.
Correct, so that one actually, uh, in my written document, I think the last one that I would be replacing, I had that, uh, approximately right around June or July. Uh, that time I anticipate it'll have just about ninety thousand miles. We'd move that one to a, uh, two weeks spare, but with also the, the caveat that I had put in there is we did a, a request, uh, the additional positions that we've discussed throughout the year and in the last budget season. And that would be the first cruiser that, to mitigate costs for an additional position, I would pull back to the front line. Um, so that would be the cruiser that I would select if needed, uh, to stay on the front line. The other ones, uh, for example, I'd be looking at, uh, moving unit seventy-five as a spare, uh, when the cruisers come in. I anticipate that one will have over a hundred and seven thousand miles. The next one that I would anticipate moving would be, uh, unit two eleven. That one, uh, will have ninety-five thousand miles by years, and I anticipate that one to have approximately, I'd anticipate, uh, replacing that around March, at which time it would have approximately a hundred and three thousand miles or over. That one, it's not like we would be selling that at, at a hundred and three thousand miles, that would still be utilized as a spare. Uh, I would anticipate, uh, I would anticipate at the time that that vehicle is actually sold from our possession, it would approximately have right around a hundred and twenty thousand on mark.
We got. So, following this, what I'm trying to do is, we're doing this to avoid, well, another reason to do this is to avoid some budget impacts.
Correct.
Later, and I know I'm jumping ahead here, uh, this budget, these are vehicles that would not be in this budget.
Correct.
In, in the budget that we're gonna talk about later.
Correct.
In the budget that we're talking about later, you have.
Two hundred and fifteen thousand. A lot of vehicles, I believe, if that's what you're gonna.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is basically four.
It would be a little on, yeah, a little under four. It'd be like three and three quarters or so.
Yeah.
So.
So what that's, uh, so that's another reason to do this.
Yes, so what that would do and why we implemented that in the budget to jump ahead a little bit is the real purpose, like we've all discussed multiple times, would be to set us up for the future.
Yeah.
And so by purchasing, uh, by replacing these five vehicles and implementing them, at different points throughout the, the first six months of the year to extend longevity and such, uh, by doing that, and also, uh, by incorporating a dollar amount into the twenty five budget and moving that essentially to reserves.
Yeah.
At the end of the year, we would, uh, have a a pot of money per se to implement in the years moving forward, which would certainly cushion, uh, the budget and our ability to replace vehicles. I would look ahead for probably over the next five years, it would help transition that.
Yeah, so it sets us up so that we can budget.
Yes.
Around two fifty a year and stay on a program.
Yes.
That's how I look.
When you look at the mileage, so what, what do you think right now? The average cruiser gets per year in terms of mileage?
So that is, uh, there's a little bit of different factors that I look at that. The, the factors that go into that are where does that person live in comparison to where do they work? Uh, and what I mean by that is with the, the call of duty with the state police, for example, we have people that live in slot three, but we don't cover slot three as much as we cover the other two slots. So do they have to travel further to get to the actual areas of responsibility that we cover? So those individuals would generally drive more. Um, the individuals that would drive a little less are like the detectives or Lieutenant Archer and myself or the rest of the command staff. And things like that, you know, if you have an individual that lives immediately in the elsewhere area, they drive, they tend to drive a little bit less. So there's multiple different factors. I would say that, uh, the average deputy, road deputy drives anywhere from twenty thousand miles in a year upwards of, we do have individuals that would drive closer to thirty or thirty five thousand miles. It also depends on, you know, the other individuals that they work within their section and where they live in comparison and things like that. So there are, it's hard to give a specific number because there are multiple different factors that would go into that. So the, the, the people like in this form would illustrate it as well. The people that I just stated would drive less miles would be the, the command staff, for example. And if you look at, you know, where others, uh, a year of vehicles that others have, you know, twenty ones, twenty threes, twenty twos, the command staff right now, we currently have, uh, actually, mine's a typo on there. It says unit ninety four to twenty twenty, but it's actually twenty nineteen. But we have a twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So we are able to, uh, hang on to our vehicles longer than, than we have with road deputies.
Well, I'm glad that you have a strategy, so that's good. And I just, you know, my emphasis is I spend, maybe get more miles out of the vehicles because cars, they're just more expensive and just gonna have to deal with it. If we have higher expenses because of repairs, then we just have higher expenses because of repairs and to kind of deal with that, so.
And that's one of the reasons we switched topics.
Yep. So I just want to make sure we keep that in mind when we start looking at the numbers of moving vehicles around keeping on the front line and not on the front line.
Any, any contracts would have to be signed by the year end?
Yeah, correct. And that's, that's another reason why I'd be looking at to solicit these bids in September, uh, with them, with a deadline for them to be opened October, November, so that we can solidify that prior to year's end. Because like I said, um, even, um, the ones that we got back or ordered, I believe in June, probably won't see those for another three, four, or five weeks now, so.
Well, as I said before, I'm opposed to policy that you've adopted now to buy professional police cars for everybody there. I mean, there's, there's, those are seventy to seventy five thousand dollars depending on what they're buying. There's no need spending seventy thousand dollars for sheriff, chief deputy, lieutenants, and detectives. I mean, right now with, uh, the twenty fives coming on board, you can buy good, brand new vehicles for forty five to forty seven thousand dollars and pay seventy thousand. So your decision is costing somewhere that they would have hundred and sixty to hundred and eighty thousand dollars in extra monies that we didn't pay to spare. I'm not going to approve purchase of vehicles as long as you're going to be wasting this money.
And my.
Buying vehicles that, uh.
My one comment on that would just simply be that, that seventy thousand, that is the, the vehicle outfit. So even if you go and purchase that off the law vehicle, like Christian Clark has referenced previously, for forty seven thousand, you still do have that additional cost outfit of vehicle. The, the actual vehicles themselves that we were purchasing, I believe they're fifty one and some change, or fifty two thousand. You can be with that additional cost outfit regardless of what you.
Well, just, just for example, right now, it's got a pickup truck. Most of the stuff in pickup truck is not in the OPV there. These would spend seventy thousand dollars because most of the money's got in that pickup, can't be transferred. If he bought another pickup truck, it'd be, it'd be the cost of vehicle plus the installation fees. You're wasting money. There's no reason to have to spend that kind of money.
The other, the one other thing I would say is the benefit of having a uniform vehicle, if you're performing, is that if, because we have no all too well for these past year accidents do happen. So when you go down on vehicles, you do have that ability to pull a vehicle and just put decals on it. You could utilize it as a frontline vehicle for a patrol deputy, whereas if you did that with a pickup truck, you would have that same ability because they are outfit differently.
You almost spent a hundred and eighty thousand just to have the insurance.
I don't know where the hundred and eighty thousand comes from.
It's the difference between what the six people, because you bought the vehicles and what you're gonna pay for six people getting these PPDs. That's the difference.
Would kindly disagree with that right now.
Well, I'm sure you do. Successfully convince these other two? I'm not convinced.
Ultimately, our plan, like I said, would be to extend longevity, set ourselves up for the future years and implement these vehicles in a, uh, a series of, or the, the strategy that I have set forth in order to extend that longevity as we previously requested.
If you go back and listen to the first time we agreed to switch from Fords to Tavos kilometers meet a couple of times and whatnot, the best thing about Tavos versus the Fords is that we can keep them longer. We've always kept Fords for a hundred thousand, and that's all we're keeping Tavos for a hundred thousand before we take them off the front line. We were under the impression that we could keep these for a hundred and twenty five, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars before we traded them, and that's not the case. They've taken them off, I mean, some of these are coming off the line, it's got one eighty nine thousand, but coming off the front line, away from the space.
Uh, we are hopeful that you guys approve of additional position, or positions that we've requested that would be a bit like you.
The other thing is, I think this sets us up for using ARBA funds for softening or moving forward. You know, but that's my big reason.
But you can't use ARBA funds for your reserve account. He's got a quarter of a million dollars in there for reserve accounts for cruisers. That's because you're spending seventy, seventy five thousand on every car you want.
You're saying of the budget, yeah, so that's three and a half cars or four cars.
Whatever it is, it could be less if you didn't buy PPVs for every.
Well, I'm gonna throw this motion. I'm gonna move across, rather than share, just solicit five cruisers in court for the counter policies requested. I probably should put with the, I, uh, with the idea of you using ARBA funds for the eventual purchase.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, John.
Permission to solicit bids for cruisers against you, according to.
Yeah, any view or sort of all together, I think that was the issue. I, I think V was in motion.
V was in motion.
The, the next thing is addressing Deputy Greg Mayhott, uh, K. At the time that he was hired in January, you guys had approved his hire under the information that we provided you. And that's not on anybody's fault except for, uh, Deputy Mayhott was brought in for his interest was soliciting under the pretense that we would laterally hire him, as we have other individuals. His experience, he had over six years of full-time law enforcement experience and came from Andrew Skarsgård County Sheriff's Office. There was multiple factors for reasons that this, uh, was not caught up to this point, uh, but it has been brought to our attention. I explained to Deputy Mayhott that I would come before you gentlemen today to try to correct the, the issue and provide him what we had, uh, told him initially. And the difference, um, is about, well, it's actually ninety cents an hour, but it does make right a situation that was our mistake. And the only thing that I would ask is, uh, we're, obviously, your requesting is presented to you that you be moved, uh, to grade, A grade twelve step F. Uh, we would ask that it be effective September seventh, where he's not looking for any back pay, nothing to that effect. The only other thing that I would ask is for this to be dated back to his date of hire for the purpose of not looking for back pay, but for the purpose of his pay steps moving forward, just to reflect time in that grade or that pay step. If that makes sense, I don't know if I'm confusing and ask that or not.
I don't think we've ever clarified, like, we talked about past experience from Ohio. It may well, okay.
H.
H, we've got the H.
The ten year sentence.
Whether or not that was experience from date of hire or experience from date of graduation at the academy. Don't know if we have a stipulation of that because risk case scenario for, for you can get what, three or four month extension in the academy if, if necessary?
I think it depends, but in this instance.
No, no, I'm just saying hypothetically, you could get, you can get an extension. You've got a one-year mandatory academy, but you can get an extension for a few months, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if it's limited to months. I think it might be, well, I have no idea if there's an actual.
Okay, so we'll just say six months, just for, good. So what you could have is you could have an individual tied by an agency in January of twenty, say. And they didn't go to the academy, graduate the academy or even go to the academy until, till August of twenty one, which is a year and a half later, didn't graduate until December. And so when they come to us in, we'll say twenty five, January twenty five, does he have three years of service? Does he have five years of service? Saying, I'm just, I'm wondering if this isn't a good time to clarify that we should be comfort, that we're gonna compensate from what we're tied from another agency or what we even, the, the date of use. Diploma from the academy.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think either way makes sense, um.
Either way, I'm just saying, we just need to decide so that we don't have to raise the issue again.
Yeah.
Do you know when we have a grad degree in the academy?
Yes, that's what I was gonna, is he graduated in December of twenty seventeen, so he would have had over six years since graduation.
And that's another thing too, is that, uh, do you guys keep personnel files in the sheriff's department?
Uh, that is, we, we, we send things out regarding personnel matters to HR. That's your question.
It's always been the county's position that HR holds the official personnel file. Under the contract, an employee has the opportunity to review their personnel files. And if you are keeping records in your file, it's not in the official file. Then the boy may not have access to those because you don't have the official file, but you didn't forward those to the HR, you see what I'm saying?
Yep, there's, uh, at least in my time in this position, when we hired individuals, that information has been, there's been a packet, uh, under Marion Saxel.
You had Greg, Mel, Mel, Mel Hotz, definitely looked in the academy.
I do, that was. Okay, I do not remember.
I do. We checked on this earlier, it's not bad. I would think that would be a very basic document for employment, we want to verify that you didn't backer anybody new, yeah? So anyways, um, I'm not sure that we need this memorialized in a motion, but I think in the future we should be granting staffs basis on graduation, so, date, the academy, employment, additional employment date from the agency.
And that's what we're doing in this case.
Yeah.
Yes.
They were able to do that in this case, yes.
Yes.
Just not sure that we've always filmed.
Okay, so other move, uh, move to approve resigning deputy Greg Melhot to pay grade twelve F on the law enforcement union scale effective September seventh, twenty twenty four is requested.
See, I don't think that's does what needs to be done. His, his effective date needs to be back in January, when we hired, January. The J S needs to be back in January. It was a stipulation that the increase in pay doesn't commence till the next pay week.
So, are we gonna make this adjustment for all employees at all? Because right now, I mean, it's based on anniversary date. Same thing, I mean, there's even differences within, this, this conversation came up. The, the jail anniversary for when they do theirs is based upon not when they were hired, but based upon whenever they were promoted. So then you have a different standard with that too. So, I mean, we've been going off in dates that are been traditionally put out there with the date of hire. So if we're gonna adjust for him, then we've either gotta change the policy and make sure that that's clarified. And in some cases, the CVA's, I mean, I'm not sure, I can look at those specifically, see what they're indicating. But it's, if this goes beyond just this one individual employee, because then we're gonna now have employees on two different types of standards, and that's gonna make it further complicated for HR to sit there and try to track who's doing what, who's getting, you know, what's applied in the case that, that you have for you. And then you're probably gonna have some people grieving the fact that now they are missing on six months of pay because their date has changed.
All we do is say is correcting state on that place. We're not changing policy. We have a policy in place that we've been following, correct?
Yes, but I mean, part of this mistake really, because this isn't a lateral transfer either. This is an outward transfer, in my opinion, because the individual, when you take into consideration, even though it's the same thing, receive more pay. So, I mean, you can make an argument again, how that our policy is written because the union still hasn't responded to my request for that reconsideration of the policy stuff that we sent down to them. But the way the policy is stated right now, you could argue that this is an upward transfer because of the nature of, of the hour of the grapes and stuff, which isn't the same.
This is not a grade change, determines upward, whatever, put down. And this was not a grade change, this is simply a step change, a step correction.
So I would agree, the only other thing I would say is just as far as, uh, our policy or policy, our contract right here under article twenty one for wages, does say that it'll be on the anniversary date of hire. It's not date of transfer promotions, our contract would say date of hire.
Even for promotion? Even for promotion?
Uh, that's simply under.
Yeah, but that's date of hire.
Correct, when we're.
When you hire January first, that's your anniversary date, and you're promoted July first, five years later. Your increase, your step increases now July first.
No, I think it's still on the, on your anniversary.
If August first was your anniversary date and you got promoted July first, you'd get a step increase thirty days after you got promoted?
No, you, it's just depending on where you were on the pay scale when you got promoted. Like, you're not gonna go up. For example, let's say you get hired January first and you get promoted June thirtieth. You go up your normal step pay raise, if you were scheduled to go up on January first, then it'd be January first, and then you wouldn't get it until it's just when you get promoted, you go to the pay grade difference, but you're, as far as the timeline for your pay steps doesn't change.
So if you were hired, you know, let's say you were hired on August first and you got promoted five years later, July thirtieth, so on August first you get a step increase. You sure?
You, so, for instance, I got hired in October of two thousand fifteen. So when I got promoted in January, I just moved up to pay grade fifteen, which is, which is for lieutenant pay. And then in October of this year, my nine-year anniversary, so I'm scheduled to go up another pace step as far as the the increase. Correct.
On lieutenant's.
Yeah, so it doesn't, our C V A just stipulates date of hire, anniversary date of hire.
So I think for the purposes of Greg, it's just all his journey is changing his effective hire date at that step.
Yeah, correct.
And all we're really doing is correcting the error that was made.
Correct.
Essentially, part of the error was the fact that he basically, within the next month, would have, under the scale that he came from and grade and all that, would have received his, his increase, which would have taken him up to a different step in the process.
No, no, he, he didn't get a, he, he, he didn't get on, he got onto his step, but the anniversary date is, it's finally determines when he's gonna get the next step.
Right.
So he would, no matter when he, he might have got hired in January, Louis, and then we, we promoted, we hired him here in February. But he doesn't get his step increases in January, but he gets in February.
But had he got his increase in February, which he would have if he stayed with the jail, then his increase when he came in would have been.
I think we're talking about two different people.
I thought that was the same one, I think.
No, this is an individual, this, this individual came from Andrew Skarsgård County Sheriff's Office.
I apologize, that's my bad.
Yeah, this, this wasn't a true employee of the county.
This wasn't the other transfer one.
No, this, I think you're referring to Ernie Fitch.
Yeah, that was the other one we talked about.
Yes, different person.
So then that's not, no, so that would be.
That's really, really, really.
I'm trying to match you up with that.
So he, he was referring to Ernie Fitch who came from the jail to the sheriff's office. We are talking about an individual that just came as a employee from another sheriff's office to here. Theoretically, should have been brought in at twelve F, was brought in at twelve B, based on the information we provided to you.
And you're not changing. Excuse me, and your motion should reflect that we change his, his step S, to change him to step F effective January seventh.
This, it was the January seventeenth meeting that was approved.
But his page increase for F does not take effect until the next pay.
Correct.
Because he's not asking for that day.
Correct.
He's asking, because.
That's why I said effective September.
If we made his step F effective today, he'd have to wait a whole year before he gets step G or step three, step.
It's two, two years.
Two years, so he'd have to wait. But he should have got his two year, his step increase.
It's already, it's doing its own review.
In January.
I agree.
Oh, take this. I think it's just a matter of getting, getting these motions to reflect the two situations. The first situation is that we're going to correct the date of his.
Effective, okay, so what was the date of his hire?
So he was, he was approved in the January seventeenth meeting. I don't recall the exact.
January, yeah.
January seventeenth, this year.
You don't recall the effective?
I don't know, I don't know if it's, I think it says effective January seventeenth on the minutes.
It's Hancock or seventeen. County. Hire date. Right, because we don't know exactly where it is.
Yeah, and you're not changing it, so whatever he was hired for, when you hired him, it's his hire date.
Yeah, Hancock County hired. Original. I'm just trying, I'm not like, I'm just trying to get this in.
So he officially started effective January seventeenth. That was his effective date of hire.
So he got so.
Time, term, so January seventeenth.
January seventeenth.
Okay.
Can you also say that it's twelve F one?
Yes, right, yes. It's just because it's in that stat where it's every other year, so they, they wanted to.
Okay, so what I'm go, my motion is gonna be to approve reassigning Deputy Deputy Mayotte to twelve F one. On the union scale, effective is, is higher date of January seventeenth with.
Wait a minute, excuse me, you can stop right there, I said, because there is no pay, there is no streaming difference. It's the same, in January of twenty-five, he'll go to F two, which is the same rate of pay as F one. So if we just simply move to correct his stat of F one as January nineteenth.
January seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
January first, he'll still be at F one, but he'll move up to the next scale, and then on his anniversary date, he'll move to F two.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I think he was referring to not the turn of the year, but in January's anniversary.
Yeah, January seventeenth.
Yeah.
So on January seventeenth, he'll go to F two.
Yeah, so.
So your motion can simply say that we're going to correct his, his.
Place on the scale.
His step placement on back to January seventeenth to step F.
One.
Step F one. We really need to talk about fairness with the same rate.
Thought it was more clear cut when I presented, I'm sorry.
It's basically what the C says, that's all you're doing. Well, you're reassigning, right, to pay grade twelve F, effective F one.
Effective, well, uh, Jan, but then we're giving him back pay, he's not asking.
We're not.
I, you may want to put that in your, yeah, put that in your motion that was, was no back pay.
Right.
What, what's he getting, T D?
Ninety cent for motion.
Wait a minute, it's gotta be in this. He is, he is getting it, ninety cent in.
Yes.
So would.
So the, that, we're back to the original motion, if he gets, it's effective January seventeenth at F with the increase in pay effective the next payday.
That makes.
He doesn't, he's going from P to F, not from F one to F two.
Correct.
Does this do it? Move to approve assigning Deputy Gregory Mayotte to pay grade twelve F one on the law enforcement union scale effective January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, with increase in pay effective September seventh. Twenty twenty-four is requested.
Yes, yes, I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Forget to ask Dennis about you.
It's kind of just, well, I'm thinking maybe that's not on purpose.
This card didn't work, we told him he might want to check his employment status.
Yes, above my pay grade.
No, I, it would be nice if I wanted your pay grade.
Yeah, uh, the card didn't work?
Yeah.
Well, again, you might just need to. Do you have a file, I wonder?
No, I just have.
Just a card.
Oh, I might have a file. I might have got a file, but here's my card.
Yes, I, it's a little R F signal, and it does wear on the date of whose effect it is. And those cards sometimes sit in a pile, depending on, could have been ordered ten years ago. No trouble. Uh, this crack, probably broken. Got it, we'll get you a new one.
You had to enter the.
Oh, nothing.
Both accept and file amendments, I'll clear report as requested.
That's present.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, very good.
All right.
I did just bet keys.
Thank you.
So you can report, uh, red like a, a drama.
Well, it's not a drama. It's not keeping.
Can you add some report?
Uh, just on Friday, we had the island rescue. I can't remember the name, but it's, in between Gold's Row and Harbor. An individual fell off some rocks, who's had, folks out there believe we have helicopters. Adam, where was the helicopter, was it helicopter? We coordinated his boat rescue, and he walked on the rocks, so, she was, the people were very dramatic. That's pretty typical with our, our visitors from our state that don't understand that we don't have a scramble helicopter. More than that.
That'd be a good job to be.
I really have a heart on, heart on.
We have a resignation?
Yeah. Another move to accept and file, I actually see my favor reports presented.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry for you.
Was accept resignation of Eric Cruz, back to August seventeenth.
Don't move.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Server upgrade and replacement.
Yeah, I have Stinger shot, I'm sure.
Different beds with three?
Three beds, correct. You asked me at the last meeting to look into maybe replacing the server, set up money in reserves for it. I've got three different quotes and some Stinger shot, prices have gone up significantly.
Are you looking for action on this?
No, you just asked me to bring in, uh.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Quotes for three of them and to have a discussion about how we're gonna continue to put money in reserves, or do we want to actually think about you can have a bond to buy the system now? It's, uh, our current system expires in two thousand twenty-six, so we have about a six months difference that we bought something with our, put in to install it next year, two thousand twenty-five.
And that server, this is a, actually, group of servers.
Yeah, what it is, is you have one physical server, which, but you have virtual ones inside of it, so we're running twenty-six virtual servers now. We've grown from about six to about twenty-six over forty years that we've had our system right now.
So, and a server usually should be, you know, five to seven years, is that right?
Five years is when it expires, right? That's when our maintenance window expires on this system. And that will be in two thousand twenty-six, so, uh, the question is, do we do a marco? Or I'll, I'll be coming to you next year with the same figure, maybe it'll be a little bit higher next year for the two thousand twenty-six year, because that's when our system will expire.
Well, what we should be doing is having our reserve capital fund every year, so that.
Do we have to use it right now?
We've been putting money away in reserve, but it's nowhere near what the amount will be.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Clark.
Yeah.
Suggested maybe we look at going down, maybe a six-month window earlier and buying a marco bonds and which may be the way to go, because we'll not have to have that cost.
So, right now, it's basically three and a half years old. Right, and then it would be forty. At the end of the year would be.
Mid two thousand point six, it expires five years.
Yeah.
If it were five years old, would you buy something from the specs that there'd be spins that you got?
I would be using the exact specs.
You would be using.
Well, I mean, there would be newer, it would be probably big, but, you know, these specs change.
So, I'm just saying, if it's been three and a half years, even five years today, needed new stuff, you'd be like.
Yes, that is correct, that was what I'd be bringing to you.
This is not going to be any cheaper, three, a year and a half in the road. And if we buy, if we buy this year, we'll now, we got at least five years that we don't have to purchase, correct?
That is correct, we'll have a, a new five-year window.
We can build our reserve again.
Correct.
Now, you're, in this, there's, there's support and all that. So if we do it early, there's no credit for support from the support we're not using, right?
Yeah, there's no credit with it, yeah.
Did we buy a five-year support?
Yes, we did, yes, yeah. Anyway, we'll lose out about six months of it, if, if we bought this, committed to it by the end of the year, installed it next year, had it installed by December of next year, where there'll be six or seven months worth of maintenance on it, so.
So we'll actually be four and a half years into this if we don't get it installed till December of this year, correct?
That'd be correct to vote for.
Oh, we will have it, not pay for it, but sign the contract.
Well, no, you, right, we'll have signed a contract before December of this year, correct?
Right, because I believe you have.
For installation, for first installation sometime this year.
And installation sometime in twenty-five.
So, I mean, this is gonna be close to five years, but by the time you get it, get it, so.
By the time I get it installed, it'll be about four and a half years old.
So, I mean, that's close enough, considering.
How much should we put in reserve now for future?
I think for the last time was, what, thirty-five thousand?
So, to me, it was like, we need to put like eighty thousand a year into it. It's, if you, if you figured that. It's your mark, grand least, not a little, then, then you ask for that amount, like I, back trying to get five hundred. Probably had it built up in five years.
I'm just saying. I just want to make sure I'm getting it right. So there's a hundred and twelve thousand.
Probably a hundred and twelve thousand in it now.
Yep.
So would you be finding any grand a year?
Well, probably six, we have a hundred.
Six, and we have a hundred now.
And then.
Sixty thousand for five years.
Currently covered by our budget and technology.
Yeah. I just, I think we should be accepting the best volume of that.
Yeah.
Today.
Yeah, and as.
We shouldn't have put it off any longer, we're not gonna get any more information. This is the price. Why, what would, what would be the better, because waiting until November, December to sign a contract?
I, I don't see any time of it one more day.
Well, I wouldn't sign it too early, I would sign it.
Right, but I'm saying if we approved this today, then he could, he could take care of the timetable, get his approval, you know, get his contract signed by December thirty, or installation sometime mid, late summer, something like that, and we leave that up to him. I'm just saying, there's no reason for us not to.
I think I can get it approved, give it to, to the vendor, tell them this. I think I can get it approved, give it to, to the vendor, tell them this for purchase in December. And, but it's going to take a few months, probably. I think last time, uh, I was told that scale had delivered system, took three, four months just to get the system, so.
So, just as a point of clarification, I mean, this obviously is a big chunk of money, and if you go by your purchase policy, it's certainly all above the ten thousand dollars that you have for your extension, the extension, so.
Yes.
Do you consider what's been done right now, which isn't technically called a bid process?
Yeah.
Or proposal process, I mean, that, you're going to have to address that because even from an office standpoint, you're going to have to be able to articulate that we did competitively seek out prices.
Well, we've got three bids.
I understand, but I, again, the law's the law and the policy's the policy, so if you're there, I'm just saying, you got to justify it, and if we ever got called to why we went with this, we just got to be able to articulate that the money was spent based upon a competitive process.
So, we got three bids though.
But that's not what the policy says of the purchase this size.
It's technically not what state statute did.
Yeah. My dad's example, he's got to go on the bid.
Competitive bid.
Yeah, this is a competitive bid.
Just like
These are three quotes. So, my feeling is that this is the homework that needed to be done to go out to competitive bid.
I'm not sure that the vendor would do anything different if I went to him and said we want a bid.
I agree.
Yeah. We should have come out to bid because we have time.
We
You already have consensus essentially on this that we're going to do it. So, to me, it's that you should have it all lined up so that we're Are there other engines out there that you would have contact to get bid?
I could seek out other ones, but I was basing the three that I chose and that we use on semi-regular basis.
To give us the best price. So if what would you, how would you handle the bid policy that would, you just want these three and say send this in in bid form?
That's what I would have to do. I mean, I did
I mean, do that process that way. You develop specs, you make sure you don't get everything in there you need, and you'd send them out with a specific return time that, that was sealed, nobody else could see until the actual date that you opened. And I'm not telling you what to do. You hired me to, to advise you. So I'm just, I'm stating again what the policy and what the law states, what to do next.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's more for you.
Well, that's
Just to say that we're kind of aligned with it.
I'll just go self-fulfill and go on to the vendor now.
The check is going to get written, so.
I guess my only other question is, is, uh, I know that we have the, the new site for EMA. Should I be going out and getting costs for that as well, or is that covered by what EMA is doing?
Wait, we're talking about your off-site location?
My off-site location.
It has nothing to do with
Well, it does. This system that I'm buying, it also has an off-site location.
I'm saying, that, that's not coming out of the EMA's two million dollar purchase.
Okay, so that is an additional cost.
That's, that's coming, that's going to come out of Amazon, so whatever, whatever you tend to do out there, you need to get going so that we can get votes and contracts. Because you're off-site with the ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Monthly bills and warrants. Move to accept and approve the monthly bills and warrants as presented. Office in favor? Guys, go to the next one.
We've been holding the rate steady at the Chi Savings Bank. They had announced in some of communicate, you know, customer service rep with us, so. All of a sudden, we had a meeting with their, with their new rep, Barbara Durr, who said, oh, by the way, uh, you guys are still holding the same, the same rate, so we need to, we wanted to present this information to you so that we could leave the choice up to you whether we wanted to stick with, the higher uh, variable rate, or actually, right now, we're at the fixed rate, right?
Yeah, fixed rate right now.
Four point five.
Well, at the, up until they made a change to five point one four.
Yeah, right. They called it fix.
And, and basically
It was, yeah.
The proposal she gave to us before I bought that, it was basically a variable rate lower than what you have here right now. But now they've kind of shrunk that timetable and said six months, you know, so they're not doing the year, and they don't really want us to fix either, but if they fix, then they'll fix at that lower rate. But it's basically six months versus the year and all the stuff that we had before. So the deal is good as it was, still never get that deal.
I agree. And to be honest, I think a fixed rate of four and a half is I, I know it's not what the variable rate is, but I worry about what that's going to do. So, my inclination would be to go with a fixed rate of four point five. I know that won't make them happy. But, uh,
Even, excuse me, even at fixed rate though, that's still time sensitive. How long is a fixed rate?
Six months. They're going to, they're going to review with us every six months.
So, a variable would change tomorrow. It's changing September. I guess it's changing this month, right? Well, if, if, if it's lower than, you know, their rate, but if they don't stay, well, you have to break it out.
In the current expectation even from the bank based on market standards and conditions is that it's going down. So unless something dramatically changes, I'd be floored if it changed downward, and, and if nothing else, they're expecting it to trend downward right now.
So, but they've offered us four and a half for six months. As I say
That fixed, yeah.
Yeah. So my feeling is four and a half fixed, I, that, just on that. And you feel the same way?
I do, yeah.
Okay, so.
I think we collectively
Yeah, I mean, I think that's
Okay, so I'm going to move the, the authorize the treasurer to accept the fixed rate option of four and a half percent offered by the Chi Savings Bank for accounting investments.
Effective nine
Effective of September one twenty twenty-four.
Now, second, uh, for discussion. The difference here is sixty-five one hundred. Which is a big deal, but we're talking about six million dollars. Is in six months. In six months, we're not, I mean, in sixty-five one hundred percent, I don't know how to say that.
Things are going to change.
Well, you're, it's sixty-five one hundred percent on six billion is more money than than it is on what could be as little as two million in six months. My point is, is that if we stayed at five one four, we could maintain that for at least three, four months, our income, our income though would be greater than reducing that out to four and a half now.
But, you're right, but at five one four, that's assuming that it stays at five one four. It won't because
I know, but it's, even by their admission, it's under four point eight, which is still thirty-nine one hundreds of a percent higher than what we're bringing to today, so I
The variable changes what weekly, right?
But, I guess I think the Fed's going to do more than one rate cut.
Yeah.
Well, you don't know. Maybe it will be a quarter of a point, but you never know. Might be surprised if we do a half point to start it off, but I'm just saying, like, it's, it's kind of tough to predict it. I mean, I understand your point that it could be losing, you know. But by the time six months, six months, there's going to be more than one rate cut. There's going to be probably two, I bet, two or three rate cuts by the time we get to the end. They've got to get it going because they haven't had a rate cut for nine months. But I'm just saying, so I think We have a, well, I guess we all agree with that. I'm just saying, probably by the fact that we're all, I'd say stay with five one four. You think we're going to be at six months?
It's a gamble.
I'll call it.
That is up to you.
Office in favor?
Aye.
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 We would have talked about it, you'll later run. Yeah, to remember this.
Alright. I'm going to move to approve the reallocation of one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars undesigned.
They were previously designated for broadband.
Yeah, I need, I really think it should be in this, that the money the money we're reallocating is as a result of closing out our broadband program and reallocating remaining designated funds. Alright, I'm going to move my second.
Pardon?
I'll withdraw my second. Adjust the motion.
So, move to like, what was your word?
Closing out the broadband projects, the ARPA broadband projects, and reallocating the one three five nine zero zero zero. It was previously allocated for broadband.
Does this do it? Move to approve the reallocation of one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars in the undesigned.
Way that the memories that can be confused depending on how you look at, so. Still holding on to the one three five nine in undesigned ARPA funds as part of the original two two five oh, but it wasn't really undesigned, it was designated for broadband purposes. And now we'd be taking it out of broadband and just going back into the lump sum view to future identify where we're going to put it.
Understand, but it's just a craft of motion, it says that.
But, I mean, you basically
So, does this do it? Move to approve the reallocation of, uh, reallocation of the dollar, that dollar. Due to the closing of ARPA broadband projects. And we're moving them into undesigned? Where are we moving it to?
Well, this, this, I, we don't have a name for that. It's a general part of money, that, that's undesigned part of money. I don't know if we have, well, we had this conversation backlash too, but, non-committed, uncommitted.
Funds, funds previously set aside for broadband projects, no longer.
Yeah, but where are they going?
To undesigned.
ARPA funds.
You just said something, well, I mean, committed fund, yeah, I mean, you
Not yet designated. Undesignated, it's all, or uncommitted, it's all the same.
It's all, yeah.
Move to approve the reallocation of one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollar ARPA funds due to the closing out of the ARPA funds broadband projects to uncommitted ARPA funds suggested by the treasurer.
Yeah, second motion. Office in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, that does two things. It moves the money back into the business, but also the closing of the broadband. We still have, but the, that two, two hundred thousand still compared to
Yeah, but on, uh, Portland.
Yeah, but that's not part of that.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Alright.
Second point.
This is obviously a follow-up to the last meeting and the conversation that took place related to the COVID discussion with the personnel policy, so. Personnel policy, one of the things that you had instructed was to clarify somewhere within that department head, which is why I gave you a copy of page fourteen of the department head. Now, it already had a kind of an aspect below with one that indicated that the department head includes the sheriff and Hancock County. The other issue that you specifically asked about was making sure that it was clear that that also includes the district attorney. So I added it into that section within it. And then, the other issue that had been mentioned was clarifying within the policy that, uh, employees have the ability to, I mean, department has the ability for the overall health and welfare of employees working in the department to therefore they're authorized to send employees home that are exhibiting signs. And then, moving on to the next page is that, at the very bottom, spelling out positions that are currently considered department heads, um, and Commissioner Clark had pointed out about the jail administrator, I'm not denying that, it's easier to pull these out than it is to put in. But unofficially, technically, the jail administrator is kind of always been considered part of those conversations, so. Again, it just gets back to the criterion threshold that you're going to use to justify these department heads going forward. So if you want that removed, it's simply a matter of approving it with uh, that item or any other position that you don't feel justified to be listed as department head, uh, from that list. And then, just to finish up, sick leave uses again, um, under B one, employees entitled to sick leave when by reason of non-work-related illness or injury, he or she is unable to perform the duties of physical position. Or, we clarify again, or when the employee is instructed by the department head or the supervisor to go home or stay out of work due to the employee exhibiting symptoms of illness, employee shall not go to work sick. Which is the other key thing that, that you wanted to emphasize. Employee has no more available sick time due, then it will be considered unpaid daily off. Which was the other thing that the commission had instructed to make sure that it was clarified. So, separate from the policy, which we can talk about next, or, these are the proposed personnel policy changes for now. Not to say these wouldn't change over time, because we're going to come back to the completely revised one, once we get a new personnel board and all that, but to try to address the short-term concerns that were raised last meeting, that, that's what I provided.
We're ready to pick that. Are we being asked to, page fifteen? Have you been asked to approve that as written?
I mean, essentially, so if you are going to remove, say, like, the jail administrator or whatever, then you just need to put in your motion. Purpose presented with
I'm sure this language has been there forever. The first sentence brought to me.
On that page fifteen?
Yes. Because, and it's the accept for terminations that brought this me, because one of the greatest misconceptions around county government, around the state is that who has the authority to terminate? And there were some counties that believe that is the commissioner's authority. It is not. Commissioners can only terminate, discipline, and suspend those people directly under their privilege, that they supervise, support. Even though they have to prove a request by a department head, only the department head can terminate employee under their control. There's case law out of Angeles County a few years ago that clarifies that. There's case law out of Andes, Skoggin County a few years ago that clarifies that. And so I'm concerned that this says except for terminations because department heads are the only ones that can terminate. With the approval.
With the approval.
Of the commissioners, and I really think that needs to be, needs to be emphasized.
I mean.
Some, some county's out there right now that was not allowing the department head to terminate without commission approval. It's just bad.
So could you, I mean, just for the purpose of discussion of what we're doing right now, could you essentially, uh, take one of those terminations out and say except for, nation's comma, which require the approval of the commission?
Well.
I mean, I see what you're saying, but.
Let me try this. Proper disciplinary action is the responsibility of the department heads. With terminations requiring the approval of the commissions. Pardon? No, it, it seems to say that the department heads are responsible for disciplinary action for everything, the discipline, suspension, but not determinations. That's not the case. Makes sense to me. Well, if it doesn't. We really have to understand thirty-eight, five, oh, one, because ironically, disciplinary action and suspension is the authority of the department head at their discretion. And, but if their discipline is suspended, they have an opportunity to appeal to the commission to see if that's appropriate. But termination does not entitle five, oh, one. The employee does not have the ability to agree to appeal that decision. Now, the logic is, is that because that needs prior approval, commissioners are gonna give them a hearing prior to them being terminated. But, uh, nevertheless, in Bolden versus Andes, Skoggin, it clearly stated it was the department heads' sole responsibility to terminate, unless the commissioners, unless the individual was the subordinate of the commissioners. Again, we simply have to change that, so it said responsibility of the department heads with terminations requiring the approval of the commissioners. That takes care of my concerns there. And because only department heads can terminate. The jail administrator does not have that ability because he's a subordinate of the sheriff. It's one of the sheriff's four divisions. Jail administrator, right? Right. Should be removed is, that doesn't mean the sheriff cannot allow jail administrator the authority to discipline and suspend. That's up to him, how he wants crafted.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Can you make a motion out of that?
No.
It's saying the same thing.
Huh?
It's saying what's already there.
Exactly.
What's it saying?
When you say except for terminations, which, and terminations require the approval of the commissioners, that's what you're saying. It's the same thing.
Exactly. That's what this state, this state says exactly what Commissioner Clark said, in my. But, if you wanna change it.
Well, it, it, it kind of conflicts itself because it said disciplinary action is the responsibility of the department, except for terminations. It shouldn't say except. It should say, in, but in the case of terminations, which is the responsibility of the department head, it requires prior approval.
Responsibility of the department.
So you can just take out except for terminations. And then the next sentence would be termination.
Yeah, that would be even easier on it, to start with a period behind the family heads, it said terminations require the approval.
Just what it says there. Just take out except for termination.
Correct. That would, that would.
That makes sense.
So if you remove except for terminations and remove, uh, jail administrator, that page fifteen.
So the other, I mean, basically, where it has some parentheses, you see termination, sex, exile, one, and that spells out that it has, that it is prior approval. So I mean, so you're, you're fine with that language, so you don't really need to like, terminations require the prior approval. So as long as that's still referenced in there, you're okay with that language. And then all those other positions right now, you consider need the criteria definition of department. Except for the administrative jail minister.
Do you think Michael, is anything in here from fourteen or fifteen? That prohibits recognized department head from getting somebody in their department authority to for discipline? So if the DA, which is the department head, sent to its administrative assistant, of putting you in charge of deciding who should go home and make sure to sit, is that cannot be supported in personnel policy?
Uh, I mean, I would obviously have to go look at that from that perspective, but, uh, it depends on, depends on which side of the pension I guess, because if I'm an employee that's getting disciplined by somebody that's not a department head and technically defined as my legal, ultimate supervisor with that authority, then I would balk and say, why does that individual have a right to? It makes arguable, they wouldn't have the right to terminate, so it's not what you're trying to argue in this case either.
Department head cannot give his right to terminate.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, so.
Excuse me, Tim, do you have the right to, you have the right, obviously, to discipline, correct?
Correct.
Do you have the right to suspend on your own discretion, but you need a sheriff's approval?
I always would defer to the sheriff's approval.
You require a sheriff's approval to suspend?
I do for myself, yes. That's what I ask you.
That's for yourself?
Yep. That's why, that's what I've always done in the past. I mean.
No, one would.
Trying to.
Right.
One would assume there would at least be a consultation with the department. How do I, for, for suspension?
For taking any type of disciplinary action, because, I mean, if you look at it this way, you're now expanding the scope of the job description of whatever position you're talking about, arguably. Because now you're giving them, them authority, because there's not an administrative assistant here anywhere that I know has the authority to discipline, employees of the nature of what we're talking about here. Now, if you're gonna do that, then I think you need to spell it a little clearer than what's in the policy right now, and then I would argue as a department head, why wouldn't I at least wanna be notified and have the opportunity to say, okay, go ahead and do it?
Because discipline comes with me, I can't, with that. The sheriff doesn't want to be, probably doesn't want to be notified every time he does an oral recommend. Counsel, all forms of discipline, I don't know, on the statute, but, I mean, that could happen on a daily basis. But if he's gonna suspend somebody, the sheriff may want to be, I gotta, I gotta be involved, and I wanna sign off on it, because.
So I mean, without, again, looking at all the language, I think you'd wanna, you'd want clarity.
See, and, and they're the monkey, they're the elephant in the room, because they're the only one that has divisions, if you will, in, they're, they're the private, others don't have. So the sheriff has division managers, which maybe the airport does, if you have a different manager for your, no. So anyways, that's the bugaboo here, that, you know, the division managers have, uh, with authority for discipline that no other department has because they, the department isn't within.
Maybe that's what should be stated, is that certain, managers under a department head would be designated as somebody who can, I don't know if that's made clear anywhere.
Well, I don't know if, if, if the civil supervisor has the ability to discipline, the civil supervisor's clerk. I don't know if that's the case, but.
And do you, do you want them to? I mean, that.
Well, I almost think that, that the sheriff.
Well, yeah.
I admire, what makes sense to me is, just to remove the jail administrator from this list. Okay? Cause that's operationally how it works now anyways. Right?
Suspensions?
Yeah, for.
Well, just that, while this, I mean, this lists him as a department head, which he's not based on determination provision yet.
Yeah, so, so to me, what makes sense is to take out except for terminations, like we've all discussed, and I think is settled.
But you need to take out, you need to take out except for terminations too. Because it seems to allude to that, that department is, don't have the right to terminate, that that's, even though the next sentence said they need approval. But, uh, I don't think, I think that's the misnomer that's out there right now, that department heads.
Well, arguably, they can't terminate somebody until you give approval.
Yeah, when you give approval, it's still the department head's sole responsibility, and that's what Bolden is all about.
No, I'm not arguing with him, but technically, it's like which one comes first. You know, you, arguably, a department head, like, I can't go fire somebody that's on your team today. According to statute and our policy.
Right?
Yeah. So, cause I would need to present it to you, you'd have to, and then arguably, as part of just cause determination, I'd be required to provide here and all that stuff to anybody, so there's a process there. Now, I hate to say this, but I'm actually saying to you, I think we're getting into a wee's way too, too, too far here.
Exactly.
The same thing with the sheriff. I mean, arguably, if the sheriff wants to have an understanding with his employee about how something's gonna be done, but push comes to shove, if an employee comes to complain, then they're gonna say, what authority did this individual have to discipline? And it could just be, well, that's, that's the chain of command, that's the authority, and this is what we've done. But you're going very slippery slope if you start giving people that aren't necessarily at administrative level, the ability to start disciplining without at least the technology of the department.
And that sounds like a reasonable statement until you get into an agency, uh, department is big as the sheriff's office, which has fifty people on it. Now he has department managers who are bigger than all the other departments, you know, of the rest of the departments in county government. Yeah, so I'm saying that, you know.
Well, I guess the question is, is it broke? I mean, right now, that's happening, how it's happening without changing anything. I'm not saying good, bad, right, wrong. I'm just, i- if there's a problem, then what do we need to do to fix it? But by fixing something, are we creating another problem, that leads to another problem, that leads to another problem? And all of a sudden, we're really way down in the weeds of, of, of spelling out on everybody who, who has authority or not.
It's that catch twenty-two, you fix it before it breaks, and you weakly break it, and then try to fix it. I'm saying that this is, this has potential for liability if used improperly. Now, if, if, if there was a misconduct by a corrections officer, the sheriff was made aware of that, and the two of those agreed to terminate. And they had a termination date, and the sheriff said to the jail administrator, okay, issuing his termination notice, and it was signed by him, that's a violation. That's not, the law doesn't provide for that because he's not a department head.
No, and the sheriff would have to.
And so at some point, the employee comes back and says, I was never terminated because I never got a notice from the department head. So anyways, I'm just trying to correct that, but I think Tim should have the ability to discipline.
So it's really just the jail.
It's really the jail, this wasn't my case.
So you're not talking about opening that wide up everywhere. It's just the, so I mean, we can obviously look at coming back with something to, in consultation with the sheriff and all that, to see what, what power, authority he has right now under the, under his position anyway, and see if there's a way to clarify this that would make it, I guess, more powerful and, and clearer to, to general population.
And I hate to, I almost hate to say this, but it could change every time. It's a new sheriff. Okay? If, if the present sheriff says, Tim, I want you to have all authority to discipline and suspend, come to me if you want to terminate. The next sheriff can look and go, Tim, time, oh dear, I wanna be consulted on every discipline, then you have a different policy, which policy can override.
So, really, the difference between the two page fifteens. IT director, jail administrator, that book. Those are the only sort of differences.
Well, I mean, the, the original right now never had that whole portion, so that page fifteen, those listing of positions, that's all there. But the version I gave you originally, I left those other three off, so.
That's right.
But just to be clear, yeah, so.
Everything's new.
Everything is proposed new, except right now, you'd be changing based on the comments, except the termination up above, and removing the jail administrator from that list of quote-unquote department heads.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
Are we in agreement there?
That what?
That all we're doing is taking out except for terminations, comma, except for terminations, and jail administrator.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna move to approve amended policy, personnel policy as presented. With the exception of removing, comma, except for terminations from the first sentence on page fifteen, and removing the jail administrator from the list, list of department heads also on page fifteen.
Second to motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next one, uh, last time I presented you two different things, kind of an informational thing, so it would be like the handout and then the actual policy. So, looking through this to avoid confusion, I went back and just said, alright, we can put out whatever we want from the policy as an informational thing, but, let's make sure we've got everything into the policy, and get that approved, and go from there, so. Michelle Cody did send me, uh, stuff that she found online from the state, and I tried to incorporate as many elements of that as I could, into what you either already had, or to overkill clarify that, you know, this is our intent, which is don't come to work if you're sick. And, and, and all that. Perhaps the only change may be in terms of the difference between the state and the county, and to me, it still wasn't a hundred percent clear. There's that five-day time period where the state, you could argue, you just, you just potentially stay home, uh, based on the five days, and that's it. Or us, and what the CDC recommends, which is what I've included in, in our proposed policy. So put all together, to me, this would be kind of everything we have in play right now for proposing with, dealing with COVID and other respiratory infections. But COVID is obviously the one that specifically generated this discussion. And then as part of this, I also included additional information and the CDC other recommendations for how you get to it. And then the return to work and the compensation for the last couple of pages. Is to provide further guidance to employees and department heads of what that should be.
Move to approve the Hancock County COVID guidance policy, point, point four is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we read this up?
There was just some verbiage that I questioned in the, the COVID policy, that I just wanted to, because I hadn't had a chance to do it.
I stole. I think we all can.
Yeah. So I just had some questions about some of the uh wording that was in here for clarification purposes and to see about changing a little bit of it. But you've already approved it.
Can you make it work, Michelle?
I mean, that's totally to you. I mean, you guys have already approved it. I just had some questions about like the close contact being within six feet of an infected person. Obviously, that six feet doesn't exist anymore after Dr. Fauci came out and said, that's, you know. So basically, we don't, we can't have a six feet in our department because we're so close working quarters. So basically, uh one of the things that was questioned was a close contact being within six feet of the infected person for a total of fifteen cumulative minutes or more over twenty-four hours.
Where are you?
Um I'm on the COVID guidance policy, page one, on the definitions.
It's the fourth percentage page.
I yeah, I don't know what page.
Oh, yes, definition.
Yeah. Being within the same room as the infected person. And then the other thing, just up about that, where it says employer responsibilities, uh the last sentence, well, actually, I guess it's one, uh in keeping with the with this responsibility, department heads are authorized and expected to send employees to exhibit signs. Can we change that symptoms of illness home in order to try to limit the spread of any germs or viruses? I mean, those are just little things.
I mean, those two words. And then the six feet, you said in the same room, but that might not.
Six feet.
Uh under definitions, the first pull-up point under close contact. I I understand where Michelle is coming from, but I think that.
I mean, I'm certainly.
Just six feet does the same.
I'm certainly not opposed to arguing that, you know. I'm not against removal of that, but the reality is I was trying to be as aggressive as possible based on what's still mentioned in the CDC standards to try to to hopefully prevent, because we're being accused of not doing enough to prevent. And arguably, again, whether this is a work site accommodation or something else, the department has has to decide. I mean, if you're right on top of somebody and you're not masked, I don't care who you are, if you cough, you're gonna send some snot somewhere. You know, that could be real blunt and honest. So chances are you're gonna infect people. So to me, it was trying to be as aggressive as possible, staying within the guidelines because we were told we weren't doing anything.
So the social distancing, what is social distancing? How is it six feet?
I mean, I again only kept with what I found on the CDC website, so.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it could be four feet, it could be three feet. Not likely touching or eating or all the other things that are referenced.
We still have boxes of masks sitting down by the mesa.
Just trying to work with it. Uh my my only thing is that what I don't want to hear, I guess, is that we didn't have strict enough standards in there and we didn't we didn't provide an opportunity to make awareness that they they needed to maintain distance with each other. Because the reality is unless you guys have two million dollars to spend tomorrow, just throw a number up there, the DA's office is the DA's office, and the DA's office has added more people to a degree with no control by the county, it's just the way things have developed. And we've looked at air and the infiltration systems and all that stuff. I mean, you could try to spend more money looking at that way, but the reality is the environment you've given them is the environment you've given. So if you can't maintain that six-foot distance, or you can't maintain a distance at all, I guess we just need an acknowledgement by the county or the DA in this case that he understands that, and the county's doing the best that it can, given the circumstances. Because that's my concern, that we don't mention you ought to be staying away from people. Again, some of this, to me, is very basic, common sense. Then the argument comes again, well, the county didn't do enough. County didn't do enough, county didn't do enough. So what's what's enough in this case? A new building? A complete new air system? I don't know. I mean, I don't have the answer to that question, or have the authority to create that, so. Absence something like that, you have to say, do your best to maintain the distance.
No, I I don't want to minimize the issue either, but if it's a COVID point, if you're, if you maintain two feet, six feet, where do you get?
The the only question would become is that arguably, the county could be sued if it didn't try to comply with regulations and 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 didn't do enough to protect its employee. And also clearly, the work is complicated, and that would be another argument for them to. So there is a potential, because that was the first question I asked when they started looking at this. It's like, well, what's gonna, what's gonna happen? What can you do? Well, the county could get sued, now whether or not, I mean, county gets sued, but whether or not it would be successful, it just depends on the extent of what the argument. And certainly at that point, the department head would probably want to step in and say, well, do I need to even try to find accommodations for this person? But if they can, then they can, so I I can't change the building, I guess, without your approval and authority and money. So the intent behind that was to try to keep keep it clear that you should stay away. So with this particular one, I I think I noted that for you. The only reason I'm bringing it up is because the budget, as I understand it right now, uh the budget and the budget numbers and and some of the stuff you see, we have not built in direct money or currently into that eight percent withholding amount, which obviously would be a direct cost to the county as well. So I'm just trying to get a sense of where.
And the employees. And the employees.
Yeah, but that that's the thing. I mean, i- i- I'm assuming you're you're going down the route of like sharing that one percent contribution fifty-fifty? But if not, and you're planning on just picking up a full one percent, then I would think we'd have to, we have to build that into the equation.
Well, if if we're going to do fifty-fifty, you can only do it one way because you can't do fifty-fifty with some and a hundred percent with others.
That's right.
And because we have union contracts, we have to negotiate, what we have to do is look at the last union contract that we can put the fifty-fifty into. And then all others become affected on that date. So the contract we're doing right now with the jail that we're getting ready to do says that at January, as a later day, on twenty-seven, you will start paying fifty percent of your on the standing medical leave. Up until that, we'll pay a hundred percent. And then the contract that we do with ICC next year says that on the twenty-seventh, you will pay. So in other words, some of their contracts, some of that three-year period in the contract, we'll be paying a hundred percent, then they'll pick up fifty-fifty. And for the non-union employees, it's that same twenty-twenty-seven date that they start picking up because you can't start charging them before we charge everybody else if we're gonna go fifty-fifty, so.
This is the contributions.
Yeah, I'm talking about the contribution because if we're going to take fifty percent of that one percent, is what you're talking about, right?
No. Yes.
No, we can charge, there's gonna be one percent of their pay withdrawn for sick leave, right?
And there's two percent, right? And then one percent, they do one percent, and we do one percent.
We can't take the one percent from them until we take it from everybody, and we can't take it from the union people until it gets in their contract. So that means you can't take it from anybody until the union contracts all have the same date for when we start taking fifty percent of the two percent.
That's assuming, so that's my question, that's assuming that the legislature is not.
Well, that's that's the question.
It does make a difference because state law is gonna.
It may change.
It may change.
Great, change, great. I'm just saying, as of today, the decision we need to make is is that someday, if nothing changes, are you going to take fifty percent or one percent of the two percent from the employees? Are we gonna do that? Are we gonna pay a hundred percent for it? The full two percent. That decision needs to be made today. And then if we make that decision to do that, take one percent from employees, then we have to project a date three years down the road when everybody, then we have the authority to take one percent from everyone, because you can't do it before that.
Well, what you're saying is dependent on what the legislature does.
I'm talking about what is on the, what is on the table two dash.
Well, what's on the table today is they haven't come up with a rule.
I know. What's on the table today, though, is that they're proposing two percent be withdrawn, and you can take one percent from the employee. I'm just saying, for the purposes of union contracts and whatnot, we need to decide if we're going to take one percent if that remains in effect. We always withdraw that. But you can't put it in. If you sign a contract that that doesn't have any language in it in jail, you can't take the one percent if somewhere down the road they decide to to implement that two percent. It's got to be done at the time of the contract.
Well, the talk has been that it doesn't matter what your union contract says, that it it's state laws is going to trump it. Now, they haven't done any, they haven't taken any action on anything, but that it's irrelevant whether there's a union contract or not.
Well, I mean, now, I mean, it.
But. Oh, it's like a tailgating that.
Well, no, the whole thing's a disaster beyond our control. I mean.
So right now, it talks about uh employees are the subject uh to that employee collective bargaining agreement, whatever, will not be required to make contributions pertaining to the PMFLA until the collective bargaining expires, under current, I know, but in addition, any employee subject to uh agreement in effect on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three is not eligible to obtain benefits. So this, and so that case is they can't, they don't have to pay, but they also can't get a benefit until they
Right.
have met that threshold. Now, what, and this is just using what our advisors indicated benefits when they came, that basically had indicated that main PMFL rate is one percent of wages capped at the Social Security wage base. And then employer and employee contributions split with employee, uh the program funding, with employee contributing up to half percent of wages.
There was no two percent, one percent?
That's the only thing I saw.
Let's not, I think it's two percent.
And then employers, let's see, so in this case, all employers, regardless of their intent of offering a plan, private state run, will need to start remitting premium, one percent of wages capped at the Social Security wage base to the state's pre-funding reserve beginning one one twenty-five. So one percent means to start. Employees with fifteen or more covered employees shall remit a hundred percent of the premium, but may deduct up to fifty percent of the premium from the employee's gross wage.
I'm still confused by what you said earlier. If we have a union contract in place, we can't impose the fifty percent contribution.
We can't start collecting.
Until it's in the contract.
Until or after that, after that, yeah, time period, after the contract expires, yeah.
Nor are they eligible for the benefit.
So we can't collect from them, but they can't get the benefit either, is is what they're concerned.
So we still, so we still have to pay. We still have to pay the one percent.
Only only on the uh essentially.
Eligible employees?
Start remitting premium capped at the Social Security wage and state's pre-funding reserve, so a hundred percent of the premium based on employees, and then um as I understand it, that that cap only applies to the ones that you can, so the one percent can only be paid based on the ones that you can withhold on, so you couldn't, so you still would have the one percent, so uh it just gets back to again how we can't collect it from them, so how you, how is that ultimately gonna be funded? But you are, you are, it's not one of these scenarios where you, as an employer, can say, well, we're just not gonna start collecting from the employee. I mean, you gotta pay the one percent regardless. Question is, is how, how and who's paying for it?
Right, so that's affected January first.
January twenty-first.
When if we have three contracts out there still in effect, we haven't, we haven't ratified contracts to the jail, then there is a group of people that we don't have to collect from because they can't, they they can't collect the benefit.
So again, that's this right now, it says, any public employer and employee as defined in Title twenty-six nine sixty-two, subsection seven, that are subject to a collective bargaining agreement in effect on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, will not be required to make contributions pertaining to the P and M medical leave until that collective bargaining agreement expires. In addition, any employee subject to a collective bargaining agreement in fact is not uh eligible to obtain benefits under that until that time period.
Do we still have to take, we still have to withdraw one percent of the wages and send it to the state? For that group?
I'm just double checking, but that wasn't my understanding, but knowing how this was written, that could be.
If we don't, because as a union contract in place, if we don't take it, you know, can you still take fifty percent from other eligible employees? Because it says you can't take it from half.
As a genuine first, you could, if you decided you were going to split the cost, so that the county isn't just gonna pay the whole one percent, and you want to withhold half a percent from an employee as a genuine first, you could do that, and then the county would ask the other half percent, and the total would be the one percent.
But what about the division that says in there you can't take fifty percent from some employees, and if you don't take it from all, you have to apply the same standards to all employees.
I didn't necessarily see that, I'm not sure.
You just have to.
It is.
Oh, yeah. He may, that's one of the bugaboo's that he talked about, that probably you're going to take it from someone. He he referenced, you know.
Is the talk that this is gonna fly, or, I mean, we, you're asking this because it's a, it definitely is a budget item.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be that if you're not taking it from the employee and what they're earning, then the county as employer has to pay its percent.
Well, the county has to pay the percentage regardless.
Regardless, but yes, but still, you have to pay it. So if you have to pay it, where does that come from?
Everywhere else is gonna be split if this comes to fruition.
So I, I mean, I I can go back and ask a couple of the questions, make sure that I'm not confused and and nobody else is, but that that's the issue at hand, it's like where we need to account for whatever the percentage is. And if you perceive, I mean, I don't remember seeing that withholding provision, but we had quite extensive discussion for this that takes on.
It seems like there was something in what Bill was saying, that if you can't take it from all because of the CBAs, that you then can't take it from any, and I I'd have to go back.
And it may be, that's the same thing. I would have to go back and look at the language, but I I don't remember that off the top of my head, but.
I would say for now. I, did we get a notice recently that there's some new, new? I think we got an email recently.
Well, we did, that's the problem. We don't know what the final thing's gonna look like. So you could also add it into the budget now. I mean, the other thing you could do is wait until you get closer to
Yeah.
the completion of the budget, but even then, I mean, arguably, you're sending it to the VAC, are you gonna include something in it or not in the report or something? Or do you trust that they're just going to?
Law advice or guidance?
Let me just read this, an employer's determinations as to whether or not to deduct premiums from employees' wages must apply to all employees. So that's, and that's what.
But does that?
That, and that's what, he talked about that, and he said, you can't take, you can't charge one group fifty percent of that one percent and then have another group not charge anything.
Yeah. Will you read that one more time, Bill?
Uh, yeah, it's, you know, I'll let you read it. It's, it's the last one on the board. And I remember, what's his name? No, not Michael.
I would hope you have forgotten that.
The guy from Better.
Scott McKee.
Scott, Scott. I recall Scott McKee talking specifically about not being. I recall Scott McKee talking specifically about not being able to take from some and all.
So, the question is, do we include one percent of the budget?
Yes, absolutely.
And I think we need to include one percent of the budget.
Well, even if we include, there should be an expenditure of one percent. And then if we're going to at some point get revenue, then there should be a revenue line that shows the contribution, just like SIP benefits. But if we can't take it from anybody until all the union contracts have been in there, then there is no revenue line for the next three years, until we get the last union contract ratified with that language in it.
Because I happen to think this is such a mess that they're, they're gonna just say, we gotta get rid of this. I mean, the governor is, is sort of digging our heels in on it, but
That's why it might not. As for tax stabilization, I'd say, now you're probably wrong. That one took a year to withdraw.
Yeah. So but I do think we need to budget for it and then if
Well, I mean, that's the safe way. The safe way is you budget one percent, and regardless of how that breakdown's ultimately determined.
Exactly.
Unless they increase it.
The only, the only excess that would be there is if we didn't have the budget for union employees that are not eligible. And I don't, I can't see that again, whether or not you still have to budget some of those and send that to the state even though they're eligible. No, the state's like, want that money.
So, yeah, that's the simplest way, is to say, budget the one percent, and we'll see what, I mean, even what Bill read, if the non-legal legalist person, he said, I could, I could interpret that a different way, but supposedly, they're going to clarify and fix all of it, but
Alright, thank you. That's all I knew of that one. Thank you for more. Michelle, what do you think of the last couple of years?
Not, not anything. Small thing. Right, three.
Looking at the revenues first?
Yeah.
How do you want to do this? Do you want me to explain anything, or you just remove each day and then we're coming back in September again?
We have a, we have an issue for
Okay.
The comp buyout on it?
There has never been a line item in the budget for comp time buyout. The, so we decided, Monica and I talked about it, I put some money in moving forward because in the last, definitely this year, due to the fact that we had three employees that have left this year that had some comp time on the books. The buyout has, it's cost the county five thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars so far this year, and then was never a line, budget line in there. So moving forward, I have put some money in the budget for a comp time buyout for the department.
So if I can add just quickly, that's another issue that probably, especially when the new person gets on board, we're gonna have to take a look at the comp time and how that's all handled. Because we have some departments that don't offer, but don't utilize, they just pay out the time and a half at the time. And then we have other departments that allow for that apparently to be collectively paid out or whatever. Now, allowing this is the question, because I'm assuming that the employees are given a chance to do that. But if they're not, then arguably, that could be a potential legal issue. So I think we need to clarify how that's being done and all that.
And be consistent across
And be consistent everywhere. So if we're gonna allow one department to do it, then the other departments should be given the same option, but they should be given the choice. They shouldn't be mandated that they're gonna be given comp time. That's the way I understand it. If you pay them, or if they earn it, technically entitled to be paid. And whether that's dissolved it through policy, as long as the employees are agreeable to that, that that's not an issue, but anyway, but it just needs to be standardized. Which is why some departments, other departments, you won't see a line in there at all, because we just, if they earn it, which doesn't happen often, but if they burn it, they just get paid out and either goes back to the line item or by chance, like with this year, the treasurer's putting a little bit of overtime in there. If that happened tomorrow, then it would be charged to the overtime line, because now it's like this. Otherwise, you only had the ability to charge it to the payroll line.
But we can have a no-comp policy in one department. Have a comp option in another.
We didn't mean it, I think it depends on how you want to do it. As long as you're not necessarily mandating your
Yes, you can
As long as you're not trying to skirt the fair labor state.
Taylor Stanis only says that I'm gonna be compensated in time and a half overtime. That's the only thing, you know, if you give comp, you have to give an hour and a half of comp for every hour of overtime. That's the only mandate. But the, but the, Taylor Stanis doesn't say that you have to give an option every employee for comp or overtime. And there were some departments that, there were some positions that they don't want, because when you when you give the guy an hour and a half of comp for the overtime, and then you pay another guy time and a half to replace him, you can see the additional expense as opposed to simply paying him time and a half. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, no, I understand what you're saying, but there's not, there's nothing there that cohesively says, even department-wide, what what, what the basis is on that.
We should clarify that per department, but in the, for example, Michelle, in your department, you've got somebody a couple hours overtime, and they took comp to say two hours. So you give them three hours of comp, time and a half, right?
I, from the way it looks, the way AOD was set up, it's hour for hour. It doesn't appear to be
Well, it can be, you know, you'd have to have an hour and a half, because our, it's gonna be equivalent, because it's gotta be equivalent to time and a half.
So if you have two hours of overtime
That's just in the AOD, and then it gets, okay, okay, because I'm like, I don't see the other side of that.
My point is, so they get three hours of comp time on books, took that off, would you replace them? Would you replace that individual that they took? No. So for you, it makes no difference whether they took comp or time or cash. Say it makes no difference, you just get lost in person.
Right.
And, but
But from a budgetary standpoint, it certainly does, because it depends on which county you're
Exactly, right.
And in this case, there was no account of sport that comp. It wasn't overtime, arguably. It, because some departments don't even have an overtime law.
Yeah. Well, it must have taken a rival wage account.
I would assume if that
Yeah, and it went right back and hit their primary wage account. No, I'm sorry, no, when they, no.
Excuse me. Don't you, Tim, you have that in some of your positions, that they can't have comp for the overtime?
They have comp.
Gentlemen, somewhere in
We can't
There are some positions that you can't
We don't get comp for overtime, we get comp for holidays and things such like that.
You don't give comp for overtime.
No, they just, they get paid, if they were overtime, they don't get paid.
The G O does not allow comp for overtime.
I believe law enforcement's one of those specific positions where it's defined in the law, that you're not eligible for that, basically, I think. But I'd have to
The law is that we, we are eligible, but we, we as a sheriff's office here are not, we're the same as the G O. We can't, in lieu of overtime, take comp.
Yeah.
Right. So, but that doesn't mean that everybody in the county government has it. It's by department. And the key should be as a manager or whatnot, if you don't have to replace somebody, there's no, no handle file to get that comp, so. Michelle is, is correct in wanting to have a comp line. So when somebody takes comp time off, they pay that line off the salary.
So I, where is it written that it's by department?
And that's, that's the issue. Right now, I, I would state that there's no indication beyond, you know, historical pass down, you know, we do it, we don't do it. And then I've had to complain from a, like, well, how can they get to do it, but I can't. And, and my argument is, I don't know. All I can do is go back and tell you what the law states, so.
In the personnel policy, there is something in the personnel policy, because I've got it highlighted.
And what's it say about comp?
I don't know. I don't have my policy, the personnel policy with me to
Well, I can tell you that the D A's office does not have a provision against giving comp to
So I know there's provision, and it contains, they mentioned it, but it, I don't believe, I've never seen it where it's specified, this department gets this, this department gets that, this employee gets this. I mean, it's, if it's separate from agreements.
What there is, is everybody gets comp unless you're prohibited. And jail, strong death, so everybody else gets
I'd have to look, confirm in the contract. I think the contract just says that you get overtime for hours beyond scheduled work, or something like that is worded in our, in our union agreement, so that's
This line, oh, this one, this line is just to take to fund that extra half of the percent, excuse me, that half. The time is in their wage.
It's more accurately to account for the, the
The half part of the time.
Because, I mean, the other way you could do it is you just put, you, you charge it to an overtime account, and that's what it is. But it shouldn't be going back to just regular wages, because then you're not capturing the full amount of it, because there's a half of time there that's not getting
That's right.
So that's really the issue. I mean, that's why I said not to messing up the budgetary purposes today, but when the new person gets back on, we should have those conversations as far as the personnel adjustments, are there things that can be done to clarify how this works? And make sure that we're still being consistent with the federal law. So.
Okay.
Anything else you want me to make higher for you?
Those big numbers are all So those notes, all in that first section, just to be clear, that's just five percent wage scale increase.
Six.
See that?
Sorry, it's so small.
Yeah, it's really small.
Six percent wage scale increase.
So what I did is I basically did an eleven percent increase, and I broke it down based on, and I told you how I broke it out. Six percent based on basically the other union contracts that are here and what the wage scales were for them. Four percent COLA increase, and then a one percent for that, for health insurance contribution increases, because I'm assuming non-union employees or health insurance rates are going to go up. I know there's a union contract here that was negotiated that there is no health insurance contribution for the employees for the next three, for the three-year contract that was negotiated.
So we decided the COLA was what?
Three point two.
Three point two. You don't want to apply a different COLA?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
But why is the one percent in, in the salary on the show?
Yeah.
If we're not going to bill the department or the employees, it's in your insurance or something, in line somewhere, the treasurer's office or something. Where do we
I, I didn't, this is, Michelle.
No.
I know, I'm just saying that it should be
If she's even talking about the main
I'm not talking about this, I'm not talking about that.
She's talking about the employee contribution.
Employee contributions to health insurance.
January first, that that would increase again.
We're already covering that in the health insurance numbers on our slide.
Yeah, so what they're, what they're wanting, I'm assuming
So let's say, for instance, a non-union, a single subscriber, health insurance line is fifty dollars. I'm assuming you guys are going up, you know, well, let's say fifty-three dollars. But there was, I mean, there is at least one union contract that was negotiated, that you never negotiated health insurance costs, and so they get to stay the same for three years, where other non-union employees are having to pick up the, the costs.
So you, you're asking for the additional one percent to cover that increase, so by effect, there's no increase.
That's right.
If we, if we pay them one percent and then take one percent from the thing, there's no increase here, you're getting
But I mean, when I've got, I've got employee making seventeen dollars over there. I mean, I think we're fortunate to have that person, but I mean, they can go to McDonald's and make twenty dollars an hour. And so we're just trying to get these, I mean, these wage scales for non-union employees have, I know you adjusted them a couple of years ago, but when you've got your union employee contracts, the wage scales keep getting pretty significantly, and unfortunately, the non-union employees keep taking the burden and the hit.
I've always said that the fixed price for union for medical contribution can be unfair to the low, low paid, because you get a hundred thousand a year employee that gets, that pays the same rate as the seventeen dollar an hour employee.
Right.
Because the argument on the other side is they're both getting the same level of coverage. Both getting medical coverage, so I
Well, this is like way beyond what's out in the market, and I, I said this on every department, but just because one job description gets a six percent increase doesn't mean all of them do.
But three point two?
How do we hold pair?
But three point two for an increase? Or a COLA increase?
That's a COLA increase. That's, that's different than I'm not saying it has to be, it doesn't have to be evaluated. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that you know, not all, I don't know. That's those numbers are too big. What's the answer? I don't know. We've got, we're running into this with every department. Somehow we need to settle this. This isn't just your department.
For the purposes of timing this, I think what we should be doing today is simply understanding what's being given to us. We're not making any decisions until the next time we're doing everybody. So as long as we understand what
What shell that is.
Yep. Let's move on.
So since you just brought that up, probably a good segue for me to recommend to you that unfortunately, I think that we, I would ask or request, I think to make this work, you probably are gonna have to try to schedule a special meeting next Tuesday to just go through the budget stuff to finalize that. And part of the reason behind it is that the, or you have to change your public hearing proposed date, I guess, is the other part. So you've got basically two options. But the statute indicates that we have to send county clerks to the budget estimates ten days in advance. And that may not have always occurred in the past, but that is what the statute said. And if it was a minor change, I would say to you, well, I guess you gotta weigh that in terms of can you sense off the back from assuming you get the numbers.
This is the public, you set it at seventeen?
Twenty-three, or point one on the other way, but it's, it's the following gap that So if you waited until the seventeenth, that, that you know, if I turn it around, send it back So if you waited until the seventeenth, that, yeah, you know, if I turn it around, send it back out the door, you only have seven days.
So we're.
So we talked about a meeting tomorrow, uh, next week, eleven thirty, because uh, there will be some doctors.
Tuesday at eleven thirty. Oh. I have a deadline, can we make, I have a deadline on Tuesdays.
Doesn't have to be. Yeah, it doesn't have to be Tuesday, whatever. If you can come up with another day, just long as we have enough time to advertise the discussion meeting. The thought process normally was is normally because of timing, Tuesdays work better for all of you, but if it doesn't, I guess that would be.
What about later? Is it next Tuesday the day that we're supposed to go on customer?
No, Monday.
On Monday.
Yeah. Always want to make that easy for you.
Two days. All my schedule has been changed. You work with nights or days?
Uh, I work mornings, yeah.
Wednesdays? Let me get you over at when?
Get you out of one?
Two thirty.
Two thirty? Yeah. I have a deadline of three that I have to meet. A lot of times I try to have it done by two, but I can't have it done by like. That's why Tuesdays, I'm not, you know, just. The, for me to stay beyond twelve thirty, one o'clock is tough. But I could do it after that.
After what?
After I meet that deadline, so three. Because John gets out at twelve and two thirty, right?
We had three o'clock.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm quite the staff to say. So if we set it for three o'clock next Tuesday?
We can't set it earlier than that because of John.
We don't, we don't have to. If you're willing to commit at three.
Yes.
I can commit at three. John can kind of pick you up more, so, alright.
But we've got to keep going here, so. That first section of every budget is what we're. And hasn't been consistent. We're going to have to figure out how to how to address that.
So moving along, Shell, in your travel mileage, is that where you get your gas?
Uh, gas comes out of there, yes. But that's not just gas in that fifteen, okay?
No, no, yes, your mileage.
Yeah. Monica broke it down below to maintenance repairs, uh, twenty zero zero five for vehicles. Uh, that is for the maintenance of the two vehicles. For tires, um, oil changes.
Twenty four fifty?
Yes, that's correct. That's why you see that. That's a new uh, new line for this year's, uh, for twenty twenty five budget. She added that line yesterday. The contractual services, right, but um, the only thing.
Wait, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, so in that. Oh, we're talking about the.
Which which line are you on?
I'm I'm trying to read.
Michelle had a lot of notes.
Yeah.
Yes, see, my notes, my notes you can read.
Okay, copy or quickness?
Copy or maintenance, do you mean, on thirty one twenty five?
It was one, you were wanting to add a new copy or something.
Yeah, I needed to, I I talked to an email yesterday with Mike and Monica. I'm still waiting for an actual formal quote and I didn't want to do anything until I actually had the formal quote. Verbally over the phone, it was eight thousand dollars for a new, for a new copy here. Um, but I didn't know whether I should make it. Well, that's what I was, I asked Monica yesterday, was maybe presenting it at a meeting, at a regular commissioners meeting, uh, for our clients.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't have anything. I'm still waiting for him to send it to me um, in the form.
She does, they do have a thousand dollar reserve for future purchases.
No, no, but what, see, her her maintenance has gone from twenty five hundred to forty five.
Because the contract.
We're adding a third.
No, because the contract that was signed by the county for this umbrella contract for all departments. Uh, ours is much more because of how many co, how many print jobs. It's a penny a piece and for the amount of printing that we have to do in our department. When they broke the calculations down, it came out to be um. All I can tell you, because it's, it hit um. Thirty one hundred, almost thirty two hundred dollars just this year, and it was only a budget of twenty six hundred dollars. So.
Expect that to work or is it something else?
Because of the amount of courts, cases, uh, not the cases, but the amount of dates that we have for court next year, the amount of printing is going to be much more. So that was why we had to do the, I did the increase as more mature.
Okay, so that that note was just because, it's not because you'd like to add a.
No, it's because of assigned umbrella contract and I, when I contacted Transo, they said it was cheaper to stand in the umbrella and just pay for the overages.
And that's where you're making it. And it has nothing to do with the third copy. That's just an anecdote.
No, no. That's correct, yes.
So I I can remove a couple of the columns, which would make the printing on the right bigger. When I'm doing the budget pages, I can remove a couple of the five year history columns if you want.
That that's fine. I'm just squinting it. It's fine.
It's really small.
You're all squinting.
Yeah, but I can.
You know, those those colored ones you could take. I don't, I ne, I never refer it on those.
The five years.
I can't, I can't read that.
Plus I do send them to you digitally too.
I mean, I have it this way too, if you want me to send it to you. So you can read it.
Okay, we bow down with Michelle. Before you leave, Michelle, the county's non-union present comp time policy says overtime is normally paid in cash. The county does not encourage, the county does not encourage substitute, a substitution of comp time. In lieu of cash overtime situations. So we don't have a prohibition against it. We just have a discouragement.
But that applies to everybody.
Yeah.
So in other words, it doesn't say only DAs can have, you know, offices can have comp time.
Doesn't say by department.
That is for all non-union.
All non-union, right.
They're normally paid in cash. They don't encourage.
So what had been, not to get tied up with this, but what had historically been told was people would just outright told, you get paid overtime and that's it. I mean, that's, that's not what that said either. Says you're encouraged to pay that, but it does, and and that's how we knew that at least you could obviously get comp time. But it doesn't make a distinction between who gets it, who doesn't get it, who should, who shouldn't. That was the question. That that somehow should be either standardized or made clear, so.
Right now, it's almost a discretion of the department. Because if the DA said, I can't afford to lose you even for six hours a day. I'm going to pay you time and a half cash and I'm going to get in the comp time. I don't want you taking time off over the regular benefit.
I mean, and let's face it.
I don't know what starts you from doing that.
And no, new employees don't earn vacation time for a year, you know, so. I mean, they get after a hundred and twenty days, you get forty hours, basically, I'll call that personal time. And you have to use it or lose it by the end of the year. So for the first year, the employee doesn't earn any vacation time, so.
I mean, I I get the rationale, it doesn't work.
Well, that's consistent.
That's.
No, I know. I know, I know. So, I mean, if the department heads are doing the comp time, at least that gives the person a little bit of a benefit if they want to take a vacation day without pay. I mean, I do have employees in the last two weeks that don't have any time, and so they had to go without pay. They didn't get a forty hour paycheck. So. And they were aware of that.
That's real work.
No, absolutely. No, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
See you around ten.
At at three o'clock? Right, is it what you said?
Three o'clock.
Your local department number, some good chance.
Four three. Five hundred sixty.
I could do a lot, right?
Zero.
Twenty.
Twenty, oh, I did bring in this morning. I don't know if you got it. It was on your book?
Yeah, see you.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's new? One. And that's what it is, what it is, right?
Yeah.
And do we, it is what it is, but. Do we have numbers for?
I'll have better numbers. Yeah, we have numbers that it'll, this'll, the numbers will change as. Uh, PNS the months go for the rest of the year because. We'll have updated real numbers. And as we change the, as we change the payroll amounts for these eleven percenters. Real amount will then.
So.
Yeah.
Isn't that where the projected increase that we split halfway in the year, some adjustment on that?
It's, it is adjusted. It's in, it's showing in the in the scales that I use.
Yeah, the other six months.
Yeah, yeah. What we are having is a few more health insurance buyouts, but that's as a result of people don't go with the county insurance, if they can provide free health insurance.
And that's the second.
They get the grant, the buyout.
We serve, there's not much to say.
Number one is what it is, the group benefits is the ICA payout at the end of the year. That's why nothing's been paid yet for this year.
Okay.
Alright, we don't like the chair.
We have Samia.
I'm not qualified.
Since John was having a good one, I'm having a good one. Bother not.
Good to you. Yeah, I believe you have a proper budget, so you have been answering questions that you may have. Correct, yes.
Scott, there was this sheet from Scott.
And as I, I know on that forum it talks about selling at least two vehicles. Um, what we previously discussed earlier with the cruisers, I anticipate that to be more around four, but that number does replicate the four. Um, in part because two of those are the older Ford Explorer, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which we historically did not receive much of a return on, so. A lot of its contractual increases as far as the wages go, the overtime. When it comes to the expenses, some of this just uh, smaller increases due to just the increase of cost for things. Other than that, any, I guess what I would consider a significant increase would be. Our training expense line and then also our uh, public safety voucher line and equipment.
What's in there?
In which one?
Public safety.
Uh, public safety, so that line uh, is addresses our, the cost of ammunition, which has gone up in, you know, recent years pretty significantly. Um, that also encompasses things like the ammunition for the less lethal um, launchers that we had purchased. Um, that would also encompass. Uh, other supplies needed, uh, whether that be replacing uh, flashlights, batteries for our gun lights, things like that are all pretty pricing updates.
Non-lethal. Uh, the address up here, didn't, I thought we had. Practicing ammunition and all that was in those purchases.
For tasers, yes. The uh, less lethal uh, launchers that we had purchased. We had just purchased the the launchers and the case and actually you have to meet qualifications and things like that. Those, I forgot, those rounds are pretty pricey. Um, just working down the list, uh, we asked for an increase in the maintenance and repair uh, for vehicles. Basically where we thought uh, we would be at a more realistic number, um, that also is due to anticipating maybe a slight increase in the cost. Uh, for old vehicles, a little bit longer longevity life as well. Uh. The next, uh, I guess kind of what I would consider a significant increase is the uh, ads. Although it's only a thousand dollar difference, it's double what was there, not just simply because of the um, county policy requirements for bids and things like that. Um, the last time we had made an advertisement, it was, it was just over four hundred dollars for one single ad, so. Uh, going down, computer support, there's a thirteen thousand dollar increase there. That's contractual services. And that just brings us simply up to um, what those contractual costs are uh, going to be, or they're about.
We used to get a document, spell their whole, compute cost, skill, and can you still keep this?
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly do that. Yeah, because I mean, if you look at uh, where we're at this year, we were at uh, we're budgeted. At seventy two and our contractual cost was eighty four thousand one hundred and sixty three. So that's why just putting that uh, thirteen thousand dollar increase in there brings us up to what the actual cost is going to be to refer. Yep.
That makes sense. What's the, why the increase in the ratios?
Uh, where do you see that?
Maintenance, repairs.
So ten to. Yes.
Twenty twenty four hundred.
Twenty four.
Twenty five hundred to seventy. Back with explanation.
That works. I'll look into that. I don't have that explanation, right? That may be a typo. I don't remember off the top of my head if there's a specific reason. The other pretty big increase is for the um officer buyout. And the reasoning for that is, is we wanted to establish a budget line there, which is theoretically uh pretty depleted as we purchased Deputy Medina's buyout for Bunsford earlier this year. Uh, so the cost of a uh individual that is certified from the academy is just barely under fifty thousand. It's like forty-eight thousand, I believe. Uh, if they're straight out of the academy. So our thoughts there, that gives us the ability to have, yeah, uh, well, it gives us the ability to hire somebody that maybe had just graduated the academy that we really implemented off rather than um months of training and essentially paying them while they're at the academy. It also is a line that I suspect we would uh look at scaling back in future years if we do not end up using that. But we want to have those funds available, so we do have the ability to uh directly buy somebody. We did not buy anybody out in twenty twenty-five and we rolled that money into a reserve, then I would uh expect in twenty twenty-six that we would scale that number back.
Radio line shouldn't have stayed at twenty-five hundred. It was like, I think that was the what the plan was.
No, he's gonna check, see why.
Yeah, I think it was supposed to stay at twenty-five hundred, but I'll, I'll double check.
We don't have to change it today. Uh, you got, you want two more deputies who want my request for all this service for the last couple of years.
I have everybody else.
You didn't have that. All twenty-three, the first eight months of twenty-four.
Okay.
So that, those extra de- deputies, that's in the regular line, right? That's another reason for that.
It is, yes. So uh, that was something that obviously to go back, we discussed in last budget year, you said we are able to go full staff, come back and ask for more, so we did. We ran into some issues trying to find that budgeting. Um, and we have put it back in the budget, that's for those positions.
Sorry.
Just saying, that radio line, I'm going back to my original notes, that should've been.
We can change it today.
Yeah, for the radios, that, that makes sense. Uh, we're able to purchase some radios a couple of years ago, so we really don't have many significant costs. Um.
So we, what's increasing the mileage?
Uh.
Sorry, why are we mainly, why, why are we increasing the mileage?
Mileage?
Yeah, travel.
Uh, so with the increase in uh, the Alfon grant has been grant, has been great to us and has allowed us to uh send evidence to, to training and obviously promotes or helps with containment and also achieve um some of these things like, for example, when we obtain the less lethal launchers to have somebody be instructed to qualify or certify our guys to be able to utilize those. That training, the closest uh train is actually Massachusetts for that. And that training for three, four days, three days, four days is nine hundred and eighty dollars, I think. So it's an example like that where the cost of everything to include hotels has gone up. So that's why we're asking for that additional.
But we've got the so maybe we'll also increase the training, right? So.
Yes, so we pay for uh, the reason why we have the difference in the lines is uh, well, just as it sounds, the training is for the registrations and the actual training itself and the travel is the, is the cost of the hotels per game expenses and such.
Okay, yeah, take a break. Well, can, let's finish this one. Okay. I need to be small. I believe so. Let's see, we just shut up. Alright, so now we're on to the jail cap. Gentlemen, before we go any further on jail cap, I would like to propose something well, a little radical, you would expect to let them be, so. Under your revenue section, I would like to add an appropriation twenty-four, five, seventeen. Title would be something the effect of mental and medical health support. And then a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation for that. Now, that's going to be, and we'll know better by, by the time we finalize the budget, but that's going to be the cost of our new mental health and medical and counseling.
As a matter of fact.
And there's no way that we can cut three quarters of a million dollars, I just might fit it in. And I think it's time that we gain the powers today, we've decided it's necessary. You know, in your face. And we're going to simply have to, we have all the choice, but we ignore the LD one cap. So you got the two billion, two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars for your tax cap. And then on top of that, we're going to appropriate another three quarters of a million dollars in deference to the LD one tax cap. So that Tim can purchase his contract. If we don't, how are you going today with this three hundred, uh, this three quarters of a million dollars cap, if we, if we don't increase?
On the record.
Well, it's a, I'm not even sure if that's where it should be in Monica's, it's kind of checking it, whether it goes in there, shows in revenue, or we simply increase the expenditure account by seven hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, cause I, I, it was part of my understanding, that's why I'm trying to see, I like to be able to see Michael, cause I, I it's sort of my understanding that a part of that is supposed to be funded from the national units.
Well, I mean, that's one of the other discussions I'm gonna have, is how much of that could, could go from there. So it could be some revenue, but if you're looking at basically saying at the end of the day, you can't just put it in revenue because there is no revenue source to take it from unless you want to say, yeah, we're just gonna spend seven fifty for Mopie, we'll just put it all there, we'll see what happens like that. Otherwise, you're talking about basically having the tax carries paid for, which basically would be just increasing the expenditure line item and the subsequent shortfall would be made up for with tax. Well, I guess it depends on your ten of what you're trying to.
Right.
I know what you're trying to call, but well, my intent, not my intent, but it's almost that we're left with no option but to increase the amount we're based by taxation to support the jail to cover this three quarters of a million dollars. Now, that three quarters of a million dollars could be reduced by anything we've put from the, to a uh agreement or any other revenue sources, but that's gonna show up in the revenue.
And it might be higher.
Yeah, and that'd be.
This cost might be higher too, right?
That's right. We gotta, we're gonna have meetings this week, they just finally put all of our opinions together on the contract.
I know, but today, we've got to conclude somewhere in the way that there's gonna be five, eight, six, eight thousand, hundred thousand dollar increase in this budget to cover that contract, correct? Are we gonna be able to say come January first, no, we're not gonna have a contract?
No, we have people that are ready to, once we decide, we're hoping today was gonna be the day, we just have all get together, have this discussion how we feel, how all the terms, the contracts would be as the best fit, but um.
We can't say that to all of them.
I would, I don't see how we can say no to all of them.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have a contract of seven thousand, seven amount. And so we don't have to decide what that amount is today, but we do have to conclude that it's gonna be several hundred thousand dollars.
They range from seven hundred thousand to two point two million bids, so. Uh, what do you want? I missed a meeting, I just see from Peter, he wanted to meet yesterday, but I, I also.
So to me, I would, I would think you'd want to be adding it to your expense line, to your expense side.
Under a sep, I'd like to see it identified.
Sure.
Under a separate expenditure account. And because basically it's the amount we're gonna say to the naysayers out there, this is what this costs us.
Yep.
And we can't cover it under your LD one restriction.
And you're still legally obligated to provide that.
You're already over, right? Payroll, it's already over.
Yes.
Twenty-four is over the LD, is over the department.
But unlike, unlike unlike the LD one in the budget, which we can, we have the authority to increase, we don't have the authority to increase the tax cap. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. The only mechanism I think that's with that is you have to do survey, so there's a process, but it's not something you get to do. You have to go through a petition with legislature and all that, so.
So, so tax after this amount, right?
No, I mean, that is basically what you're going to get or are allowed to get, it would be potentially arguably reimbursed for up to that amount, but you're basically saying that we can't stay under that. I mean, that's what you're saying. We, we've got a choice. We either need to uphold the, the laws that apply to the health, safety and wellness of uh the individuals that are housed there. Or we adhere to this cap you put in the jail, but we can't do both because we don't have enough money. I mean, and we can't, and if you arguably don't, you're violating an individual's constitutional rights if you don't provide them with their, their, that level of care, so. It's neither one. And I'm not arguing one way or the other for you, but I, I've been told that other counties have started to do that too, because they don't have an option. And we know from our own local councils that we need to beef up these contracts and, and incorporate additional stuff into them because that just opens the, the county up to more liability if we don't.
So there's more to lose by not doing that than there is violating the tax cap.
Well, I mean, the, they're saying. Arguably, the, the, the you could always have the legislature come back and try to have the AG's office or someone else step in and say, you know, you can't do that, that's illegal, whatever, and then you need to give money back, but damned if you do, damned if you don't, is where you're at.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna pick up battles because there's a battle over the, you don't provide this service. That, that battle is gonna be a lot, one, two point two million dollars.
We're providing a service. Now, we just, the liability right now is all on the county, all medical is on our county, with our contract, except that's our issue, that um, liability cost, this, each contract, the contract will reduce our liability.
I think we've already addressed the fact that we've got to do this. Probably the deal with today is how we're gonna pay for it. If we have any other choice than to add an expenditure line, identifying an additional amount that we're putting in over and above the cap in support of this uh contract. So I'm gonna propose that after we get done revenues, as we look at expenditures, that we add an account number.
Yep. Under the contractual.
Under contractual. And we've come up with a title that.
With inmate medical line, when we get there, or it can go away. That's like the thousand one obvious budget. Because that's gonna, this contract will take up all these.
The political, like taking somebody to the hospital and stuff like that.
That's our, no, medical, that takes care of um our we pay our provider out of it, we pay our medical provider out of it, all of that medical.
contractual?
Yep.
Alright, so anyways.
Where are, where are Matt services initially paid from?
That can, they're also, when, when, under the, we pay it once you're in under the, under the Matt, under the.
Right, but it's reduced.
Title twenty-five.
But it's reducing your cash before you get reimbursed. This has been my concern.
Right, it's coming in, that's right, it comes in stolen, it's going out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna wait for our quarterly payment.
That's part of the cash flow issue is we're paying all these Matt grant services out of the grant line. It'll eventually be reimbursed, but they, we hardly, it takes forever to see that.
If you see, nobody cares, but you.
Well, cause I'm the one keeping an eye on, I'm getting ready to give him, give them the November, the November money.
Same issue with, with contract law enforcement, so sometimes you two, three months, give me.
Right, but it, but it's cash flow that's, it's affecting us.
I'm paying my mortgage, I'm cracking my mortgage. Do your check on this money, you don't worry.
You know, we're giving, we're giving some costs to maintenance and stuff like that, which helps.
Other than that, I don't see any dramatic issues.
So Tim, you're saying that inmate medical will basically be replaced by.
For, yeah, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have to figure a way because
Or should it?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to look at our average medical cost at now, cause anything outside the jail is gonna still be on our dime. So we have to look at our medical expenses and then see if we can.
Right, but.
I plan on some of that money help.
But we don't wanna take away that hundred and fifty thousand.
Not until we figure out what we're gonna do with
No, but what if we sign a contract, so they're not gonna come in there and fill teeth and all, full teeth and all that.
No, no, we still have some debt, we'll sit, we, let's, we, we look at what's good, what we spent outside.
We can reduce one fifty.
Right, we can, that's right, we can reduce it.
Okay.
We're gonna take the Chelsea out of it.
Right.
Sarah out of it.
Right.
I mean, I can take out of it, so.
So maybe a forty zero nineteen, it's close, right?
Yep.
Something like that. And if we plug in a placeholder for this meeting, we don't have to have an exact number, placeholder. It's the pharmacy involved in that at all?
No. Yeah, that's what we're paying by. That should reduce, because each contract has a, their own pharmacy they use, and we can feed, we can get their bulk pricing off that, so that will go down a lot once we get a final contract.
Let's get back to the top. Back to the top. The present contract expires what, by September?
Thirty-four, everything, we're getting everything contract now until the thirty-first.
December. To what?
Oh, contract of.
CBA.
Yes, that's also, yeah, end of this year.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. And I know they're talking bigger numbers now, but we didn't know what to put in, didn't want to recommend, but it's only three point two.
That's really frigging though, isn't it? Because we could be negotiating into April, May and come up with a contract that we didn't want.
I think this contract should be pretty quick. If we drop towards uh, you know.
I know, it's still, if we don't get going, we may not know what that number is till that, we will get what it is.
They submit something, try to do something next month, next month.
I don't think you'd wanna shoot higher, probably than than lower, of course, but uh three point two certainly sounds low.
You spent ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand per ton directions in the first eight months, I think you'll get like sixty-five, sixty.
We've been, we've been short. Right now, I'm not gonna board, we're One's short and full of staff, one just get done. We're hiring somebody, kind of, back, fully finished out. Two weeks, so we don't have as much pie times. We're using a lot of pie times. Which is lower than correction, pressure lines lower.
This is your first year. Last ten, we've been forced to have.
Right now, we're, we're close to that, we have some very good, yes, I want full time.
Good life for all, wishing you will. Well. Beyond what we've just done. I don't have the fertility to even look at this because whatever the bottom line is, it has to equal the tax gap, right?
On your side, yes, I am, I have the opposite. But we are gonna go with the LD one cap down this year, time we get all set and done.
Already, oh, already, right?
Yeah, but you gotta look at your total revenue. I'm talking just the contract, you look at your total revenue, then you're not gonna expend any budget, it's covered by your total revenue, correct?
And revenue was well as we hoped. Because of this, I mean, every federal board, that was, that was, that's down a lot this year, because. We just didn't, didn't have the individuals, but now other facilities were in the tissues, so now we're setting on nine things, where, so now we'll get the door back up, but they're gonna keep us open. Inmate funds are gonna go up with employee, uh, inmate medical is gonna go up because. Um, now the statute is saying what we can and can't do.
Okay, yeah, but look.
That's not the money.
You're projecting three million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars revenue. But you're only projecting three million.
Mortgage.
The expenditure.
Correct.
And we're always lacking in funds, how come the expenditure budget isn't at least the amount of your revenue?
We went through Monarcher, we had a long discussion about the revenue side, I mean, the expenditure side thing, we think that's. A solid, it just the, the revenue was, and there was a lot of unknowns in revenue side.
Yeah, you're going in pushing on your revenue side because you don't think you got it. I just almost said, one department that has a cap, I would think would be, would be every penny that they can raise. What's the cost of running their, their.
They'll take more than, when the contract, that's gonna take more than.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna give you another. We'll give you another. Source of funding for that.
If that's, if that's where we're gonna go, then. I think we need to. Reduce the revenue actually.
Okay, if that's the philosophy, that you don't think your revenues are really accurate anyways. Has to buffer, then you're gonna use it, fine, I don't care.
But no, that's our, that's our.
It's just like, it's just like contracts. At the end, you have revenue and the cost of your contract is identical, it's the same amount. This is very similar, but, uh.
All we had the same concern, she asked if we wanted to reduce this to meet that. Um, we had the same exact concern, because the only number that she could move is the tax gap, you know, that really. We know was solid, we know what. State's really gonna give us for the, for this year, we really don't, we really don't know. Federal boards are moving packet, you know, I like what they can do with a one thirty, but if we're gonna reduce anything, that, that's one I would, I would look at is reducing the. I can bring that back next meeting.
That's not, no, that's not, that's not the issue I'm raising. If you're saying, I'm not comfortable with my revenues, I'm gonna use that difference as the buffer in case I don't realize my revenue. That's been, that's been managed.
That's where we're at.
Just that if you're twenty thousand dollars short at the end of the year. And you met your revenues. And if you meet your revenues and your expenditures don't stay, what do you do with the balance? Have you ever had a balance?
Yes.
You don't know what to do.
We, we always, you know, we, I know we're probably all accounting on the how many thousands of dollars in back. That they feel over the LD one cap, they call it bills, I mean, we've got a pair of bills, we try to keep it down. Payroll. Just by placelet.
Of course, when you were doing this revenue, you weren't considering what they threw out there, right?
Right.
So, because just looking at a paper right now, I turn around and say, well. This looks like it's gonna pay for itself. So, but I assume based on past practice, all these other things we're talking about right now, we know that that's not gonna be the case, and we also know. That your expenditure right now doesn't include that other new. Contract, right?
So, but you also have an offsetting revenue, not offsetting revenue, but we'll. We're gonna identify that as an increase in the amount we're willing to appropriate.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if I was a taxpayer looking at this right now, I'd say, why are you gonna raise another seven hundred fifty thousand because you're showing on paper right now. You're gonna have enough, so I mean, that's why I think it becomes more important that those revenue numbers, I guess, are, are looked at, and of course, you do your best estimate on the expense side like this.
But he does, yeah, he's correct, expenditure, yeah, this, this much. So.
Not right now.
Cool. Which revenue line would you be adjusting? That's down the tax cap, right?
So I mean, you basically, you would be taking, you wouldn't put anything associated with the revenue on this because. Your revenues would be your revenue, so if at the end, when all the calculation is done and we fact everything in. That's where you're, you're come up with the additional seven hundred fifty thousand. Because you need that, and the only source you have at that point to make it balance with your expenses with your revenue is to have it come to taxes.
Yeah, so, so that's my exact point, that's why it's important for it to not adjust the revenues, but to put the seven hundred and fifty thousand in the expenses.
Expenses have to be accounted for, yeah.
Yes.
Revenue side, you wouldn't, because, I mean, not that you don't count it for, but the understanding would be when the calculation is done, you'd have a shortfall of that amount. Plus some, obviously, to what, what the taxpayers would have to.
Yeah, a- and I think we're talking a hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand, it's gonna be more than that.
Well, yes. We have, we have. You like the second lowest. How much was that tip?
Well, if you look at it, there's. Actually, as you look at the contract, the lowest bidder is. When you start factoring, when you take into the contract.
What is the lowest bit?
Seventeen.
So, that's the lowest. You, you like it? I mean, it looked okay on the face of it?
Right, yeah, that's what we gotta sit down and discuss.
Just saying, do, I'm the face guy right now, you know, like, so it could be, it won't be the two point two.
Sure, when we opened the contract, we had a thing of five hundred some thousand, but that was just for the MAT side of things, then there was another seven hundred some thousand in the contract, so it moves up one point two.
But you're not, you're not even close to advocating for the two point two, right?
No, I don't see how I could even come to you with that.
Well, I was hoping you can get it done for what you need.
It's have it.
It might not be, whatever it is, it is, whatever it's gonna be.
Yeah, and it's gonna be reflected here, that's the point.
And I'd like to see it identified separately and distinctly. So when somebody says we violated the LD one tax gap, you're right, we did add that amount. So we reduce the one fifty from health to a hundred, and we put six hundred and fifty in there for appropriations and support, something like that.
No, no, you're saying reduce it back to a hundred, but add it.
No, no.
Have it included in the subsidy.
He said a hundred and fifty in medical, he said he could reduce that, so we're saying we reduce that from a hundred and fifty to fifty.
Yeah.
Then, and he had a seven hundred fifty dollar, a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar contract, we, we put six hundred and fifty in there for the contract.
No, he's still gonna need that.
A hundred would actually be, yeah, be six hundred plus that, six fifty plus that one.
Oh, you're right. You're right, it would end up being a six hundred and fifty increase.
Yeah.
That's right, you're right.
But that line still needs to say seven fifty.
I'm hoping by the time we all have sat down, have a decision made and have a conversation. And position with a contract, have a fight. Let's go over this.
All right.
Yeah. Next, Tim. So as I just said a minute ago, the contract should be. Paying up revenue, is it?
Should be, yes.
Look, also.
I'll stay up there.
I mean, and being facetious, but I mean, that's all, that's all that's required, if you don't spend it, you don't get it, if you spend it, you're gonna get it.
Should wash up.
You don't spend it, gentlemen?
Yes, same thing as last.
So, what's the topic?
This one should be, that, that should be a pretty easy one, so. Uh, next one, we have is civil, there were just a few minor, uh, increases.
We're not expecting any rate increases from twenty-four. Did we get a rate increase in twenty-four?
We got that twenty-five dollars that the county fee. Up to.
We got nothing before we get twenty-five now.
We have twenty-five additional, so we went from sixteen dollars to forty dollars is what, what that went to, and then they had the ability for the county to add on that twenty-five dollars on top of it, and we done all that.
So, yeah, for, uh, civil, really the only, other than contractual, um. And benefits, the only changes would be to gas, we added five hundred dollars to that and fifteen hundred dollars to vehicle maintenance. Um, vehicle maintenance was previously fifteen hundred, we asked to up to eighty thousand. Uh, the reason for that is tires, oil changes, things like that, um, we're already at seventeen hundred this year, so it's to help. Have a more realistic, uh, number there, I'd rather come in than over.
Well, I got a question about the, on the revenue, so. If our actuals right now are almost ninety thousand dollars. Why can't we get more than a hundred and thirty-five? I mean, like, are we gonna end up somewhere higher than that?
My understanding is that's a set.
That, yeah, that has been so up and down that, I, I mean, we can, we can project that a little higher, but remember when we went to that. We got, we're able to add that twenty-five dollar county fee on top of that, we, we estimated the revenue at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we weren't even close to that, so. Uh, we could look at a little bit of an increase in that commission if, if you thought, um, that would be appropriate, but, you know, um. I think a hundred and thirty-five thousand is reasonable, and if you go above that, I, I mean, it's gonna show as revenue anyways.
That's ninety thousand in eight months. Which equals a hundred and thirty-five thousand for a year, for the numbers.
You're good.
The number's right on.
Yeah, and if you look back at, I just dragged you back to twenty twenty-three, I mean, I understand some things have changed a little bit, but we're at. Hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two, so we're reading that ballpark of that as well.
Seeing the papers going down, even though the revenue.
They have, and the cost of, of serving them, we had, uh, our server was at the top of pay scale, and the one that we have now is, is less, so our, uh. Uh, salaries and stuff are less.
All right.
Uh, so, the last one we have is the drug task force. Talking with, uh, state of DDA, they do, uh, perceive the ability to bring back a, or to allot a state-paid. Main drug physician, they are, would like to do so under, um, the, the free tax that was previously discussed. Whereas the county would match it by providing a county, uh, employee for the drug task force. Basically, the state is doing that in order to, uh, allot that position to the county. Uh, so that they're able to get two physicians or two agents out of it, rather than allot them to another agency. Um, that's why we've, we've requested, uh, to bring back Department Forty-six. And, uh, put two people in there, one of them being, you'll see the revenue, that's to reflect one of those positions paid, being paid for by the state.
We're gonna pay for one, they're gonna pay for one.
That would be the agreement.
So why, uh.
They're gonna pay for the higher price.
Yeah, that's, that's why you see that the, uh, revenue is more than just simply half, is because we. In the interest of budget, we put the, the higher of the two on state, so.
Let's say, uh. Drop a different guy here with me. Under your expenditure line.
Yep.
Is that the gross pay of the two agents? When I say gross, what they're gonna get from the state, or is that just what we're going to contribute?
Uh, down at the very bottom, you're talking.
No, I'm talking about drug agents, zero, one, one thirty-six.
Yeah.
Expenditure.
So that is the combination of the two, which then is us.
At the state, they give more money for being an agent than we pay as a deputy, correct?
You are correct.
So is that one thirty-nine, and what is that number, is that at the state rate or is it what we pay?
That's at our rate, so the, uh. That's at our rate due to the fact that the state, uh, paid physician is included in that, that would be taken out. And anything above, my understanding, incorrect if I'm wrong, anything above our rate to bring them up to that state rate. The state would cover it, correct?
Yeah, they don't give us a check from the state.
No, no.
They get it from, so. The expenditure for the two agents should be the gross amount of the state rate, then you should show.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, at the end, regardless.
Do, it doesn't reflect here.
Well, I agree.
Let's just say hypothetically, we pay an agent fifty thousand, we pay a deputy fifty thousand, state pays him sixty thousand, okay? So, in the expenditure, we've got two agents, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in gross wages, correct?
Correct, that's true.
But the state is only gonna give us sixty thousand for one. And.
That's it.
Ten thousand for the other. So the revenue is going to be seventy thousand, the expenditures will be a hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Correct, yeah.
So why doesn't, why doesn't those numbers, why is your expenditure. More than your revenue?
Because we're picking up, we're picking up the, the difference between the two.
Yeah, but he's only, it's only showing a, a seventeen thousand dollar difference. And I don't understand.
Oh.
I don't understand, shouldn't that be?
There.
Is the, is the gross. The gross salary?
So what you're not seeing in this, which I think is the disconnect, is you're not seeing that, uh, zero, one, one thirty-six is what their wages would be here, that's not their state wages because it's. Nearly possible for me right now, I mean, I guess I could make a ballpark educated guess, but. Because it also depends on where they're at on our pay scale, they put them usually like five percent above that type of deal, so. I mean, I could make an educated guess what the state-paid positions would be paid, but this is. Essentially.
What the county, this is the county's cost, you're not accounting for their portion of.
You do though, because.
I am the revenue.
We're going to be issuing the checks, payroll checks, we're gonna, they're gonna be reimbursing us.
Yes.
And so you need to know first of all how much you're going to pay, and now that rate's distinctly decided, isn't it?
I think it's detective.
Detective.
Detective, okay, so you do know, you do have an objective rate. That you can compute. And we do know. What, what we don't know is that depending on who the agent, where that deputy came, where that officer came, that agent came from, he came from out of the S P D, we need to know what. Now, that's the pain. Because we, we, we can pay his, his rate. The town's rate, right? Right. And the state's gonna pay the difference between the detective, state police detective rate and the town rate. Have you done the, have you done this?
Have I done the difference between the state and the county enough? So I can come back with that number. This is, I mean, essentially, this, one of those positions should be a wash, like the town contracts, the other is the difference that you would want to see reflected, but you wanna see it across the board, is my understanding.
One thing we know, or we can estimate pretty close, is what the gross wages are going to be for these agents, because it's two detectives, S P detective, so we know what that is.
Yep.
What we don't know is unless you guys have already found somebody who's gonna donate an officer, and you can figure out what that sort of costs, we don't know for sure what it's going to cost the county for the agent that we're paying.
So we would look at, that, I think there's a little bit of disconnect there, we're not looking at having somebody donate. So we would look at, that, I think there's a little bit of disconnect there, we're not looking at having somebody donate an officer, we would be sending two from the sheriff's office, one.
Okay, so that's what, I didn't know you were sending them for beer.
That, that's what we would be looking at.
That's what we, we had, had in the past, was two, so that's why.
That's right, but I didn't know if you could afford to send two up there, but if that's what you're doing, then you should have a better idea of what that's going to cost for, state's gonna pay for one hundred percent.
Correct.
You know what it's gonna cost us for the other one, because you worked for it. What is that?
And we looked at step five, wasn't it, Dakota?
Yeah, so, that's where these.
But you haven't, you haven't really looked at your staff and said it's gonna be you and you.
So, for, for.
You better take.
These numbers. I use two phantom people that are interested, that this would be their actual pay wage.
Well, I said, to be safe, we should be taking the higher of two, they're gonna be making it twenty five, putting that in.
The state, which is what I did. That's what one can add.
The only thing we didn't have was the state wage.
Right, everything here is, reflects actual live people, what we have, it just doesn't reflect the state wage.
What's the one hundred and twenty two thousand for revenue?
That, yeah, so that represents one of the, the higher of the two physicians being paid for by the state and the, uh, medical benefits, and that's, that's one of the, the two physicians being paid for by the state, that's what that revenue represents.
True, the state's not gonna pay, pay these hundred and twenty two thousand dollars.
Oh, and I got the difference of that other one.
No, that's nobody just said.
No, that is the.
What's the hun, tell me again, what's the hundred and twenty two cover?
So a hundred and twenty two covers the one, uh, that covers the one agent, the state paid agent, and that also covers the benefits for that agent. So the employee cost, that's the total amount for the agent's wages, the employee cost, uh, to include things such as, you know, the retirement, the health insurance workers, that stuff.
So the, the difference between the S O rate and the state police detective rate and the deductions over that are not included in the revenue, is that correct?
Correct, which is, I believe, is what you wanna see reflected.
It should be, because we're going to be, that's why, that's why that number, that hundred and twenty two would be larger.
I mean, one.
The one twenty nine.
Yeah, the bottom number affected.
It would be higher, if you're gonna increase the, the top number, yeah?
No, our insurance is what we say in the middle, what the rate. States.
So what you're saying.
What was talking about, why is that only seventy thousand dollars, we insurance?
I don't know.
That.
It was the agents that you chose, is a, is a buyout.
That must have been buy.
Okay.
Not insured.
And that's what we pay them? Buyout fee, that's what we pay?
Yes.
Seven thousand, sixty nine.
No, no, this is the, the one that's not a buyout, this is the health insurance for the.
For a single, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Single twelve month plan is only seven thousand dollars?
How the buyout is?
We have two people, we have two people in the state who need to pay the insurance for one of them.
Seven in front of me, so I can't, I can't, I don't wanna tell you wrong.
You, you can tell me though, that, wha- what is the, what is the rate for a single for a twelve months? I mean, it's, it's eight thousand, twelve thousand, twenty thousand? You don't know? Dakota, I just.
I think you're making an argument that, that revenue should be higher here.
Is that?
Right? Is that fair, because it sounds like that.
It, it, it's gonna have to be higher, if Dakota says this is the guy's wages, deductions, and insurance, then for one person, it's gonna be higher, because there's the difference between the S O and.
No, so six, nine, nine, four is what the employee pays for a year. That's that little bit.
We're talking about the hundred and twenty two now.
No, I know, but that's that seven thousand dollar.
So, I guess my confusion there would be, is if, if you look at the twenty four, obviously that was based off of our standard. The hundred and thirty four, seven thirty five. So, this individual obviously does not make as much as Thornton did at the one twenty two.
So it's twelve thousand dollar difference.
So you think that is S O patrolman, that's into a step.
We'll say, we'll say, we have.
Dakota? Step F, deductions and insurance, that's the total cost. Okay, so that's gonna be increased by the difference between the state police detective and the S O gross wage, because that revenue's gonna be paid by the state.
Correct. Yes.
That's not in here.
Correct, these are S O wages factored. So I can take that back and go to main drug and say, hey, what is this state?
Okay, go ahead, I'm, I'm going to send you a questionnaire with, say, what's the value of this, 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 for this reference? And maybe we'll talk again in full chance, okay?
Sounds good.
For those that just have employees here that need their good sessions, you want to. These, these ones that you have, Leroy, is time consuming, or is it just a, is it enough?
I don't think so.
No, I, I agree.
You know what it is?
We need to, first of all, it's the same explanation on the whole, that's what he would be doing in executive session. So we'd go in and out for, uh, no, Leroy, we only, yeah, well, we only go into one executive session.
We'll talk about them all and then back out.
Yeah, and, and it should be pretty quick. And, and one.
One vote. On them all.
Yes, if we take that.
What's F G and H?
Those are, uh, those are I T, I T ones.
And cybersecurity issues, because they're confidential, because they have ways.
And is that tied to?
I don't see that they were. You've already reviewed them, or you looked at them, and it's pretty much just that they're foundational documents.
All right, then we can get these in, in a few minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Mister George, Mister George, Mister George.
We're gonna be.
Uncharacteristically, we have five executive sessions today, but the first four, in front of you, shouldn't take more than a few minutes. I know we've set you back already an hour. I would, let me start, if we just step outside, or maybe do an executive session, we'll get to you within a few minutes.
Okay, go out and just text us.
Uh, we're gonna go into, I think, one, aren't we?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll text you, that'd be the perfect, that way you're not hanging around in the hallway here.
Yeah, well, Jesus, we can do it faster than that, don't come too fast.
We'll go stretch our legs.
Go stretch, go stretch.
Yep. You don't have to tell me.
Yeah, just go away, you can, you can say just go away, we don't want that.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna go move to go into executive session as permitted by Title One, M R S A Section four oh five, six C, where discussion or consideration for the condition, acquisition, or use of real or personal property permanently attached to the real property or interests therein or disposition of publicly held property or economic development since, since premature disclosure of the information with prejudice or competitive bargaining position of the body or agency.
Opposites in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think there's any reason that, that we, that we. Okay, every time.
If we're out of.
Executive session?
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the easement just compensation slash approval to present letters for parcels two, three, four, five, and six, authorized as a chair's son.
Second motion, opposites in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
So every time there's an offer, the county will offer you that, act as a dismember? Wow.
Yeah.
This, this could take some time.
Well, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
And mileage.
Well, the process started in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so, we're ready for the next one?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Go into executive session.
Hey, me, please.
While the doors open, basically don't you wanna let people back in?
Just a minute, yeah, we'll let them in after, the people we want.
Okay.
Okay, I'm out of here.
See you then, thanks. You know what, Paul, we don't.
Well, Monica's point is that we should allow.
Well, the thing is, if we want everybody to come back in, make the motion, maybe I gotta kick everybody out.
Yeah. We should just say, there we go.
So, efficient enough.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to go into executive session as permitted by one, by, by M R S A Title One, Section four oh five, six F, for discussion contained in records where access to the general public to those records is prohibited, prohibited by state statute accordance with one M R S A Section four oh two, three L and I. M R S A Section and one M R S A Section four oh two, three M.
Second motion, opposites in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye. I'd like to thank the indulgence. Or how do they take it, executive session?
I'm gonna move to approve the Hancock County Government Information Technology Incident Response Plan as presented.
Second motion, opposites in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to go into executive session as permitted by M R S A Title One, Section four oh five, six F, for discussion contained in records where access to the general public to those records is prohibited, prohibited by state statute accordance with one M R S A Section four oh two, three L and one M R S A Section four oh two, three M.
Second motion, opposites in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're out of executive session. I'm gonna move to I'm gonna move to approve the Hancock County Government Information Technology Acceptable Use Policy as presented.
Second motion, opposites in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. I'm gonna move to go into executive session as permitted by M R S A Title One, Section four oh five, six F, for discussion contained in records where access to the general public those records is prohibited by state statute accordance with one M R S A Section four oh two, three L and one M R S A Section four oh two, three M.
Second motion, opposites in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.